Why don't we do, what do we do? Just run first to come back in and then go back out the end. We kind of like, then we'll finish on the other side. So, yes.
Does it go along with that?
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, so it's good. You get to discuss. So I'm really glad because they're like, oh, okay. I think they probably will, but not as far along as I thought. All right, we'll all call this meeting to order. And then let's just take a quick look at the agenda. Uh, we're gonna talk about county surplus property. Jasmine's gonna give us an update on the medication-assisted treatment for opioid use disorders and potential board resolution. We'll talk about bank financing for replacement of sheriff's vehicles. An update on the census. And Tim Loeb will also give us an update on the survey results from the regional broadband study. So that's what we have on the agenda. Are there any other items people would like to cover at this meeting? Um, I have, I have one. I wanted to suggest, could we, um, could we maybe just have like a, if we have time, maybe just do a little discussion at the, we get to the other agenda items, just about kind of this meeting and how this meeting's working for everybody. Is the timing the right? We've talked a little bit about the timing, you know, is a different time better? So, um, why don't we just have a little checking on that and kind of see what folks are, what folks are thoughts on that? Okay. All right, well, with that, I will, um, um, we'll go to the surplus property item.
Was there anything on the night's agenda that you wanted to talk about?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The agenda for tonight, too. Yeah, any questions about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, so we will have a, um, Ron wants, Ron Hagan wants to do a brief closed session with us. He, his schedule is that he has a family commitment later, so he wants to do that at the beginning of our meeting. So I think we'll, we'll open the meeting and then we'll go ahead and go into closed session, just to hear from Ron. He thinks it will not take very long. And then we'll come back into regular meeting, go through the agenda. And then there are a couple of other closed session items that we'll go back and do at the end of the meeting. What, what are the nature of those items?
Uh, two attorney-client matters and one is ongoing litigation of, I don't have the site, but it's the estate of Michelle Smiley.
And don't forget for resolution for G, that right?
Yes. All right, any other questions about the agenda? Okay, great. Okay, so now we're ready to talk about surplus property. Sir, what?
You can go ahead, but I know what we named it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, tonight's consent agenda is a new list of surplus items that we'll be seeking your approval for auction on gov deals. Um, we plan on this to be a regular routine process to present this list to the commissioners on a quarterly basis or as needed if our surplus gets high. Another part of that process is to make this an active list that we'll put on our intranet so that other departments can go and look at this list to see what we have available for them and what they don't pick and choose from is what we'll be providing to the commissioners to approve to auction on gov deals. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I do. This has worked really well through Michael Upstairs for many years. And you don't need to hold vehicles for 30 days 'cause value of vehicles go down. Plus the people down there have been trying to keep things running. Everything else, the battery's dead and stuff like that. I don't know anything about computers, but you know, you got computers, you got all kinds of stuff. As far as the board, I know a little bit about cars. Some people may know a little bit about computers. But so far, everything that we've done, even the gentleman I'm talking about, he took a $2.2 million check to the bank for us. That was one of them. I think, uh, I've talked to Arvel about this a little bit. It just needs to be fixed to work. But stuff's put up, it's put up for sale, it's put on the website. It don't matter if the people in the departments know it. That's not the problem. It's, the problem is, we want to sell it and get rid of it. And sitting there holding it for 60 days, 30 days, or 90 days is wrong way to do it. So it just needs, we need to make some kind of amendment to where Mike, I mean, I think his last name is on the fourth floor.
Standberry?
Standberry? Right, he's been doing this for year after year after year. And with, with basically no problems. You know, if you want to go on, if I want to go on, anybody in here who wants to go on, mind, you just go to gov. You might find something you want. But however often we fix it, where it just goes to you or whatever it is, this does not need to come before us, period.
Statute requires that you would give me the authority then? So you would have to give that authority to staff where we could dispose of assets?
I'll make a motion in this little meeting, which probably is not one of them.
We can, we can't really, we can talk about it, we can talk about it, but we can't actually do it at this meeting.
But the main thing is, we need to get it to back to where it was. So this stuff, people look on, on this gov tab and are used to looking at control cars and computers and all this stuff. Each and every month, they're not gonna be used to looking at them every three months. Then you pile them on it, then the price goes down. So we need to get as much out of it. And if, if we can do this, uh, however how, through, uh, you know, ever, let's see.
If, with direction from the board, we could look at the policy that the county manager indicated, give flexibility to staff for items, for group of items valued less than $30,000.
That's great, because statute, $30,000 higher has to have, has to have. Is that for individual item or collection of items? So if there were four or five vehicles and they...
Individual items.
Hmm?
Individual.
Okay, so they, you can say, do those together, even though collectively they're one, uh...
Sure, that individually, I would think, but that'd be a policy decision.
So we could look at that, at something we could put on the agenda?
Yes.
So if, you know, three people here are wanting to do that, I, I think it's a good idea to look at it and we could put on the agenda or discuss it.
Somebody, does anybody disagree with the idea that items less than $30,000 ought to be staff-level process to, to sell them? I mean, as long, I mean, I guess I would just say, we, we ought to just make sure we're, you know, we feel also comfortable with the overall policies for vehicle replacements and things like that. And if we're comfortable with that, then yeah, these small-ticket items, I think ought to be kind of administratively handled. So I'm really, I'm open. Any other thoughts on this for the commissioners?
Good.
All right.
So you're not looking for that tonight? That'll be next meeting, that we'll have that resolution, so we'll put this process tonight in place.
Get it in process, so we can just step up, get it down.
Sounds good. All right. So for less than $30,000, administrative over $30,000, it'll need to, at least be on the consent agenda, right? If not, national discussion.
But that, that stuff, anything, whatever, things could get rid of.
All right, thanks for having me, Ron. Appreciate it. Okay, next up, that's the medication-assisted treatment item. And Jasmine, you want to start us off?
Sure. Yeah, this is intended to be a preview and a discussion, certainly if, yeah, okay, a preview and a discussion if anyone would like to talk it through and want to acknowledge that Chair Clinton Miller is here. This, excuse me, item follows up on a presentation and discussion we had at our second meeting in May broadly about different responses to the ongoing opioid crisis and the fact that despite so much good work being done, we continue to see very disturbing trends, both in the rates of unintentional overdose through opioid and then unfortunately overdose deaths. And just want to say thank you to all the staff at the county and at the sheriff's office and many community partners and state-level partners from North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services who have for many months, I think, been looking at the question of what will be involved in expanding access to medication-assisted treatment at the detention center. A little bit of brief context around this medication-assisted treatment is considered the standard of care in treating opioid use disorder. And there's a lot of data showing the impact of those programs being available at the jail in terms of people being on the road to recovery from a very difficult disease and also in terms of things like reduced rates of recidivism and the cost savings that go into that. So this is an issue that ties most directly into our strategic commitments on responding the opioid crisis. It also has ties to our work around criminal justice issues and trying to develop programs and interventions that break some of the cycles, especially of folks that are being arrested again and again and again when really what's going on is a mental health need or a health need related to addiction, a disease of addiction. So, um, this, today, really just wanting to preview that, um, uh, on our August 20th meeting, be introducing a resolution, um, along with Chairman Newman and Chair Everett and the two other folks putting this on the agenda, but I've had the chance to be in touch with everyone in commission about it. And this resolution would endorse the use of medication-assisted treatment as a standard of care and specifically endorse the planned expansion of the program at the detention center, which is scheduled to launch in its pilot phase in September with C funding that's coming from North Carolina Partner Health and Human Services through state opioid grant. So this will be leveraging external funding to create this expansion of services. And this is an opportunity, I think, for the commission to stress strong, strong support for that as it gets off the ground. And also to have another opportunity for conversation in our community about the ongoing realities of this terrible crisis and also, I think, a source of hope within it, which is that when people get access to MAT, as it's called, their chances of being able to rebuild their lives and lead healthy lives significantly increase. So just that little bit of a preview there. Happy to answer any questions, Chair Miller, if there's anything that you wanted to add, please feel free to. Thank you.
And so, when is this coming into the agenda?
August 20th.
August 20th, okay.
So the only thing I'd add to that, I think it's a, a great, uh, I don't, the sheriff is putting that in place, which I'm assuming that's where the direction is coming from. I think it's a great idea. I mean, certainly we want to try to give those people some help and some hope. I don't necessarily, you know, I'm not a big fan of doing, you know, a lot of resolutions, so I'm not necessarily, um, I don't know that we have to do that. But I did think, sure, you know, that strong support for that and trying to give them some help while they're there so that they don't seek out. You know, I had a conversation with a, with a friend of mine this morning or something that the Eagles partner, I, it'll never happen to anybody, but it brought that line, you know, and so a lot of that struggle related. So, yeah, that's my, my comments on it.
Other comments? So, you know, this is certainly not something I have deep expertise on, but I mean, the, this, the simple way I, I think about this, you know, kind of based on what I've learned, you know, had the chance to learn about it the last few months, is that for folks who have, um, you know, have an addiction issue, they're spending time in the detention facility for whatever reason, maybe it was related to that, maybe unrelated to that, you know, they're there and that when, uh, when folks leave, there's extremely high rate of overdose and lethal overdose following people leaving, right? Because they have this addiction, they haven't been able to access these drugs that they have this addiction to for some period of time, short period or longer period, and then they, they, they can get access to it, they overdose, and there's a high rate of death following. So that's, that's an outcome we're seeing a lot. But that there's evidence showing that if they can get some of this treatment, that it might actually be the opposite outcome. Maybe the time that they spend in the detention facility is actually a time where they can kind of start getting on a path where the chances of them successfully dealing with it are actually much better than they... So kind of turning a, what's probably a negative situation from their perspective, being in the detention facility potentially, into kind of a pathway that can be a better, a better path. So I'm sure I'm oversimplifying that some, but I think that's, you know, that's a very, a very compelling, you know, place to try to intervene, right?
Yeah, the best way to tell stories often is a simple way. And that's part of what this program does, is it doesn't just say, we're gonna prescribe MAT while you're in jail. It also is about connecting people to the continuum of resources so that when they are re-entering the community, they are getting access to that medication, but also access to safe housing, adult support. So, yeah, it's trying to break that cycle and kind of create a new story about the county and the communities that have been able to do this, see that it is creating that, that new story for those and, and bringing hope into an issue that I think so often we just get such, very grim, it's just very heartbreaking stories. I think all of us know those stories or we've seen, seen them, we've been directly touched by them. So that's part of what certainly motivates my interest in this, is how can we help create more hope for folks?
I think it'd be good if we're gonna look at this, that we have some, uh, we have some statistics or some, something, you know, or other departments that we've used it before, or here's some of the results. That way it's not just, you know, you know, emotional.
Yeah.
In the move, it, it's, it shows that it actually does provide some assistance and some help. So, and I don't know who would deliver that, but maybe if we're gonna do it, I mean, we would have to have...
Who will supply that report?
But you have, over near on Merriman Avenue, it's not, it's people that take drugs or have been on drugs. They go every day, every single day to get this drug so that they don't stay on drugs and then get the drug for two days. But they have to show up on Merriman Avenue every single day, stand in line, be able to get that drug for one day.
I think you're referencing one side, and, and with the advent of medication-assisted treatment, it's being widely prescribed across the county. There are even health departments in North Carolina that are starting to prescribe it. Winches prescribes it, Mahak prescribes it. So there's many different places, including someone's family physician, where they could get this prescription. There's new technologies with the medication. It's, it's, some people would compare it to insulin, the way that, that's required to treat diabetes and, and the way there continue to be improvements in the way the drugs are available in terms of longer-acting doses, et cetera, et cetera.
I think our, our mission or direction or resolution is that we, we want to provide hope and help and assistance while people are, um, when they're in jail. But we want, we want the ultimate goal is for them to be free of that addiction. And I think we need to make, make sure that that's the message that we send, that we want them to be free of it.
I think that's the message.
That helps them become free of that demon addiction. We should send that signal.
Absolutely, yeah. That's exactly the message of it.
Yeah, I would like to say I'm all for it. And just coming from a country boy, I believe in just common sense approach to everything. But when we look at opioid, the destruction it's doing, let's not talk about nationally or statewide, but here in Bonham County, I see it every day. I see it with members of my family, members of my church, everybody. We, I'm all for this resolution and we need to do all we can. And I agree with statistics, but folks, in some cases, we don't even begin to know the statistics and the damage that opioids are doing for us. And if we wait, it's gonna just do more damage. But we need to take the lead as commissioners and do all we can to protect our community. And that's what it's all about. What we can do for our community. Folks, this is why we were put here. This is why we were elected. And for us to have a discussion on this, yeah, I don't, let's not waste time, let's move on.
All right, very good. Um, next up is the bank financing for Sheriff Newkles item. And Mason Scott's gonna help us out this week.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners. I have not been in front of you before. I am Mason Scott, your finance department. I am presenting on behalf of Don Warren, who was out of office this week. Give me just a second, I'll see if I can access the presentation, which you should have in a minute. Would you have?
Yeah, it should be.
So this is a topic that you've seen before, and this is really just a recap of the status of where we are at this point with the funding and financing of replacement vehicles for the sheriff's fleet. A high-level overview of where we are in the timeline, along with the approval of the budget for this fiscal year. We will approve $1.65 million to replace 48 vehicles in the sheriff's fleet. Following that, when we have entered this fiscal year, we worked with our accounting's financial advisor to facilitate an issue of RFP for financing in the way of an installment purchase contract. Since that time, finance department and the financial advisor have been in discussions with one another, gathering, reviewing, and summarizing those proposals. We are here today on the 6th. I'm gonna offer you a tentative recommendation for the lender we think that you all should resolve to go with. In two weeks, on the August 20th regular meeting, we expect you all, hope you all will select a bidder and approve financing of these vehicles. And then on September 6th is the tentative close date that we're working towards. As far as the bid process and the response of themselves, fairly straightforward. We pressed it a five-year term with fixed rates. Vehicle orders are already in process and will be so through November. We expect our first debt payment to go out August of next year. After five years, the final payment would be August of 2024. There were at least 50 lending agencies that were contacted for this process, including national, regional, and local organizations. We had 14 responses in total. Home Trust was the locally headquartered entity that responded to us. Our primary considerations in this release were obviously the interest rate, you'll see the range here, high ones to almost 3%. Closing fees and issuance costs, which kind of bump up the total financing amount. And prepayment terms, there are some other considerations as well, the administrative burden on staff and things like that. So based on the responses we received, we did narrow it down to three winters. This is a quick outline, and you all will see this again, we asked to approve this financing in two weeks. This line at the top, if you can see it, is the actual budget approved for the vehicle financing. I will say that we did round up to an even number of 1.7 million, but we do not expect to finance in that amount, just for the purposes of conversation. Based on that, the issuance cost and other fees potentially associated, we believe that Bank of Amer, Bank of America would be the lowest total cost for financing. And so that would be our recommendation today. You all will, in the future, see a resolution with more specific details about these proposals.
Um, hey, back up, please. So, interest rate 1.94, all in TIC. What is TIC?
Total Interest Cost.
Total Interest Cost, so it's counting the, like, the issuance fees and the other items about it? That's all embedded, okay?
So from here, as mentioned, we will have a resolution and a contract available to you all in two weeks. The language be, basically to authorize Avril and Don on behalf of the county to issue the debt. The language in the resolution and the contract would be a not-to-exceed amount. So in two weeks, we should have a better idea of the actual purchase cost of the vehicles. We would only be issuing in the amount that's appropriate to cover the vehicles being purchased. As mentioned, it would not exceed the budget in addition to the issuance cost for the debt. Again, we do recommend Bank of America as that lender. And then on September 6th, based on a decision from you all and final numbers in pricing, we would close the financing on September 6th. Any questions?
I just like to know why we have to have so many cars at one time? Who made that decision?
So I think that our understanding from the finance perspective is that this was a part of the budget discussion, and so we're kind of just moving forward with the number that's already been agreed upon.
I still want to know, that's a lot of money and it's never been done before. Regularly had 400,000 to a year to work with. He made it work. His cars still work good. Now we're talking all this money for 40-some vehicles that somebody threw out there, big number. I guess just, we're a big county, we can do what we need to spend, to give people money again. But me personally, I voted against this total budget, this is part of one of the things that I voted against. Because we have staff, we don't have management, we don't have finance. We have people that understand vehicles. He understands the insurance. I understand certain things too. But the thing that I didn't understand is why we have people in different departments making decisions to spend 1.6 million dollars of the county's money financing. Now, we, we had a screw-up here a year or two back. We got $1.8 million worth of ambulances down here for financial 15 years. But that, that's not a good deal. Plus 10 new vehicles for the sheriff's department, that same process, and that's about two years ago. So how many vehicles do we have to have as brand name? It's 80,000 mile stuff. There's nobody, I ride around, car turned 180,000 this morning. Still runs fine. Long as I don't hear anything first wheels falling off, but I'm in good shape, motor wheels. Get it pulled in, transmission quits, you get pulled in. But, you know, these guys, when these things come for maintenance, up 4,000 miles, get the oil turn, get some brakes checked, get some rubber checked, get everything checked for suspension on these cars for these guys that ride them. Don't matter if it's got 100, don't matter if it's got 10,000, as long as that car is in good shape and the suspension does what it's supposed to do. No, nothing breaking. More set here, get ready. And I would let all six of them, I remember twice a month, but I will not vote one time for this, and I'd like to know the show. Why you had to get $1,100 more for seven wheels for your car, for your partner?
So is that, that your whole question?
Can't hear back here.
Or we're gonna have to get $1,100 for wheels for the next four to six.
And, no, we're not. And at first, I went back up, just first thing when you said that this has never been done, about the number of bills we've been, that's not so. They've done it before. Of the sheriff done it. They are, they had to give it. And you, are you aware of that?
Can I get back to, I've got questions on the financing.
Yeah, so, so I'd say, you know, I'm sure...
My first question, I don't know.
Can I go ahead?
Sure, go ahead.
So the other part of that is, the same way that I ordered, uh, Tahoe, if you want to know, so I ordered the Tahoe, I also ordered the Willy in that day. So the actual bill that initially was no order, probably more than we want to end up with. So this is just one of two hundred and some vehicles that we had up in our fleet that I drive. And in addition to that, that bill will be used again, not only by me, but others. So to answer your question, I'll tell you in some way, feeling some kind of... So to answer your question, I will tell you in some way, feeling some kind of way, because Sheriff Duncan has done the same thing, and I want to question him. So when did you question him? Because I've done my research.
I questioned his when he had his own vehicle. I questioned. He got thirteen hundred fifty dollars of money to drive his own vehicle. I questioned, that's what I knew, Sheriff.
That's not, that's not the whole fact?
That's money in his pocket. Why is he, wheels on the vehicle don't count. Just because you wanted social, social, I mean that.
Yeah. So the agenda item is not the vehicle replacement policy, which we have talked about before. And if there's three commissioners who want to put the vehicle replacement policy back on the agenda, we can totally do that. But the decision's been made to procure vehicles. So really, the question on the agenda right now is how to pay for it. And if there's three commissioners who want to go back and look at the policy again, it's a fair question, but I would want to see that people want to go back and spend time looking at the overall policy. That's not what we're talking about today. Other comments, Commissioners?
Yeah, I've got a question. When I look at the interest rate, this 1.9, is that counting in there what we're paying upfront, the twenty-three thousand? The twenty-three-five, is that normal now? Maybe I've been out to on.
Where is the cost for issuing and paying the documents and stuff? And you have our financial advisor here as well.
So the true interest rate is actually more than?
The 2.46. That's the true interest rate, which is 2.46. Just a little lower if you go across the.
Oh, that's still lower, but it takes into account the twenty-three-five.
Correct.
Yeah. Four banks have a way of getting their money.
Great pay interest, right? That's all it is. Great pay interest. All right. Other questions or comments? All right, in this beginning agenda.
Just want to let Sheriff know, I stepped out and talked to Van Duncan when this came out and asked him, I said, you know, we're ordering a lot of vehicles. And he said, Mr. Preston, we have not ordered none over the past, and I have to totally support this because we have not been getting any vehicles last four years. And on Commissioner Farrar, 1.6 million, if you figure out the bits and fours hundred thousand a year on them, it's 1.6 over four years anyway. So I know when our van has nothing to gain or lose out of it, he says we need these vehicles very bad.
All right. Just a number of comments. Mason, thank you for the update. Appreciate your help on this. All right, got a couple more. Tim Love has given us an update on the census and then also talked about the survey results on the broadband side.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Our first topic relates to the 2020 census. Just want to give you a quick update on the ask this year, some of the work the staff has undertaken at this initial point, there's still a long way to go. In your package, you do have a copy of the slide if you'd like to follow along. So in terms of the 2020 census, our agenda today, we'll provide a quick overview of what's coming in 2020. We'll talk about our activities to date, and then we'll talk about next steps. So 2020 census overview, just a reminder that federal government administers the census. However, the federal government relies heavily on local organizations, in particular, local governments, to assist with the census. And so this year, the census is doing that again, and they're asking for our support. The thought process here is that we have the relationships in the communities, and if we want to increase participation rates, the way to do that is use folks in the votes. In terms of what's coming long-term, postal mailings will start going out mid-March of 2020 related to the census. And those mailings will be active through the end of July. This year, the census is piloting a few options to take the census. So you'll have three options when you receive that mailing. One option will be to take the census online. So this is a new process. You'll be able to scan a QR code on your postcard that's tied to your address, and you'll be able to take the census in that way. Additionally, you'll be able to complete the census over the phone, if you choose. And finally, as usual, and as we've been accustomed to, you'll be able to complete the census in person if someone comes to your house. Quick notes, as you're talking to folks in the community, a lot of attention on the census this year. Census will never email you, and the census will never call you. That's not going to be their mode of contact. However, if they do come to visit you, they will have appropriate identification. So as you're talking to folks, please make sure that they're aware of that, especially as we're piloting kind of a new method of taking the census. Final note, the census will be the short form version. So rather than six hundred questions, we're talking about ten to fifteen. So that's what you can expect. Just quick talking points if folks ask you in the community. No questions there? We'll proceed to the next slide. So this is all about participation rates. We've given you the last two censuses, as well as, census, sense, as well as a goal for 2020. So the federal government has put an eight percent goal on us, which for us, you can see in the green, is a four percent increase on the last census, which was also a four percent increase on the previous census. So kind of tracking with our steady increase, but as you know, at a certain point, it's hard to improve on really good marks. One thing that's really important for us, though, is to communicate the significance of the census. I know you know the value of counting folks and what that means politically, but I wanted to quantify it for you in a way that turns into dollars. So when we talk about the census, each uncounted resident is the loss of approximately sixteen hundred dollars in federal funding per year, per person. So sixteen hundred dollars per person times ten years, which is the next time we would do a census, would be approximately sixteen hundred dollars over a ten-year period for one person that's not counted. Again, we're counting all folks, so this could be counting a newborn, a three-year-old, a fifty-year-old, doesn't matter. If we're able to increase our participation rate by one percent, that would be approximately twenty-five hundred residents in Bunkin County, which equates to four million dollars in federal funding annually, and forty million dollars over ten years, just by a one percent increase. So as we look at the census and move forward, just wanted to give you some talking points and, again, quantify the significance. One item I would say, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this, you know, estimating the exact dollar amount we're going to get from federal funding after it goes to block grants and allocations, I can't do that, but I can give you a rough talking point. This is supported by some research that I passed you off. Any questions on participation?
What will we be doing at county level to try to increase this? Where are you going to?
I'm headed there right now.
You got that for me?
So in terms of activities to date, we participated in a Census 101 session that was hosted by Land of Sky, included representatives from the Federal Census Bureau, as well as other local governments. Out of that, while we established a working group, which includes local governments, the city of Asheville is working with us, the workforce, Blackmount, and Weaverville. We've extended an invitation to all the municipalities in our county, and some are taking a more active role, just based on their time commitments. Additionally, we have the chambers of Congress that are participating, so the Asheville area, as well as the Blackmount and Swananoa Chamber. And then finally, heavy support from our county departments. So our community engagement team, Health and Human Services, Communications, GIs, and planning. All of this comes together to identify Commissioner Belcher's question. How is the county participating? Our goal is to establish a Complete Account Committee. This is the census terminology, a CCC. And the purpose of that Complete Account Committee is clearly hone the messaging, create the buy-in, to sort of get folks understanding the value of the census and what they need to do. The county will not be knocking on doors as county employees. County employees may volunteer or, you know, take on temporary jobs, et cetera. But as a county organization, our job is really to organize and make sure the word gets out. Does that answer your question, Commissioner? A little bit more about the Complete Count Committee. The purpose, again, this is a census recommended process. We didn't come up with this. It's a cross-sector committee designing courage participation in the community. Primary goals are to develop an outreach plan, which is tailored to the unique characteristics of the community. Again, we know the folks in the community, so use us to get the word out. The Bunkin County-wide CCC will include representation from our schools, so I'll be in touch with BCS and ACS. The university is UNCA, A.D. Tech, nonprofit community, United Way is an example, faith community, business community, and the media. We think having the media involved is a key way for us to get the word out. So we will be sort of standing up our subcommittees, which will include folks in these areas, and then get the word out. Next step. So in terms of the near term, we're trying to get this Complete Count Committee together, so we're sending out invitations to folks like, hey, if you're interested in the census, give us a call. Here's how you loop into what we're doing. If you've got your own initiative, that's great. Let's just stay in contact. That way, we're not duplicating. We'll convene that full group sometime in late August. We'll do census training in late September, and then we'll continue to develop our communication plan through late October, so that we're ready in April of 2020. In terms of an ongoing basis, very important to recruit additional census employees. So again, this isn't, we're not paying anyone. This is federal funding for census employees. But partnership specialists and recruiting specialists are critical assets for census. Those are part-time federally funded positions, and the census is having trouble this year recruiting folks for those positions. To support that, our communications team has developed some social media posts that they pushed out through our county central website, as well as through Facebook and other sources, and we pass that along to the folks on our committee to pass that along as well. We'll continue to work with our partner organizations, and ultimately, we'll do a cross-community marketing campaign. Those are our next steps. You'll hear more from us as we move forward. We're currently meeting on a bi-weekly timed schedule, just to make sure we're getting our feet set, but we have to relax that at a certain point and focus on the census. Any questions?
Sounds good.
All right. So we're going to shift gears out of the census and into broadband. For this conversation, Sarah Nichols with Land of Sky is going to join us. Sarah is a regional planner. With Land of Sky, has been instrumental in broadband in our county, as well as others. All right. So broadband. So our agenda today, actions to date, just to get you up to speed. We'll talk about some of the observations from the survey that we issued earlier this year, and then, again, we'll talk about next steps. Before I do that, I want to give Sarah a quick opportunity to update you on, you know, her role from a regional standpoint, the West Enden project, and things like that.
The West Enden project came out of our last economic development strategic plan, as broadband being identified as kind of the infrastructure of today's time, water, sewer, roads. Now it's broadband because of all of the facets that address those, education, healthcare, et cetera. And specifically with broadband, what's tricky is there's not a lot of local governments that have a grasp on how it intersects with the private sector. There's a lot of policy in the way, there's a lot of money in the way, and how we funnel that money in the right place. Is it their responsibility to do it or ours? So Land of Sky, several years ago, started to dig into this a little bit deeper and thought a way to do this would be to attract a new provider to the area. They had identified six urban areas, two of which in Bunkin County, Billmore Forest and the city of Asheville, and put out an RFI to get that process started. We're still working with that provider who won that contract and to remove barriers, but it's no small feat to do that in today's, it's a political climate. Phase two of the process is what Bunkin County at large, as well as all of our member governments are a part of, which was to do a regional demand aggregation study. The reason we do that is the SEC maps closely overrepresent what happens specifically in rural areas as to what kind of coverage is served, you know, because they're provider-driven. If a provider lights up one person in a census block, they get to call that covered. The state, as a byproduct, said what we need to do is get our own data, so that we can be eligible for more federal funding, to say that we are indeed unserved, to kind of say, SEC says this, but Bunkin County says this instead. And through that process, you do the demand aggregation. We put together these profiles that also have a lot of additional information coming along with it, ways we see that Bunkin County had opportunities, what kind of next steps, things we're doing in policy. And we use kind of the big package of all that data we collected back over the last few months to drive those answers for you guys.
And so at this point, we'll give you kind of a preview of some of the activities that occurred. So actions to date, Sarah came and presented to you on April sixteenth at your regular meeting, updated you on some of the activities that were occurring. Since then, two major things have happened. Inventory of vertical assets, I believe, it's a fancy way of saying tall things, towers, tall stuff. But in addition, we began a community survey campaign. So county staff worked together to develop this poster that you may have seen in local post office, or tried to get in Ingalls, but less successful there. But our county staff sort of went forward with that process, using our communications folks, but also our community engagement folks. So they reached out directly to community centers and sort of got the word out. Our campaign was utilization posters, social media, and in some cases, in-person visitation. So we had some folks actually helping others complete surveys at community centers, just to make sure we got the word out. In the end, the result was about twenty-six hundred respondents, which was a decent turnout for an online survey, especially when you're sort of asking folks to take an online survey if they may not have.
Yeah. The irony is.
In the places where we suspected we're uncertain, we did more of that in person. We tried to find a local partner to do the paper surveys. Your health department did paper surveys as well, which had a good response. Twenty-six hundred respondents for a niche survey, I think is great representation. We got it across Bunkin County.
That's great. So what did the survey say? Just want to give you a handful of talking points. There's others out there, but of our twenty-six hundred respondents, nine percent said that they did not have internet access. In addition, sixty-one percent said that they required the internet to do educational activities as homework. Additionally, thirty-five percent said they require this for a home-based business. Another talking point was that seventeen percent claimed that service disruptions were greater than eight hours per disruption for their internet access. Correct. So what is this, you know, these are great talking points. What does that tell us? One, it tells us that demand to use internet for more than just fun stuff, you know, to use it for education, to use it for jobs, is there. However, our access is either limited because we don't have it, or if we do have it, the quality is questionable. So it's a pretty compelling story. When we look at our survey results over the course of the county, you know, I know this is difficult to read, and I'll just talk high level. You know, when we look at the county as a whole here on the left, you know, lots of folks do have access. That's indicated by those green dots. However, the red dots are kind of buried in there. You're saying, Tim, more people have access than don't. And that's part of the point. Lots of people do have access if you're in the right community, if you're located off the right highway, whatever it is. But we still need to pay attention to those that don't have access.
So is there a difference between those that have LTE on their phone and those that have wireless? Because some people may think they have access, but it's LTE.
There's an education gap on what people would perceive.
Absolutely.
Access. So I would say that probably a lot of people who think they have access are just getting it, probably LTE on their phone.
Yeah, those similar dots. I don't know. I'm not able to.
Can you walk us through a map? The red dots, not too many, but there's some red dots that appear in seas of green.
That's right.
What would you imagine is going on there?
There's a couple things.
The, we asked why. If you said you didn't have access, why is that? And the greatest percentage in Bunkin County came from cost, a cost barrier.
So, you know, there's a question of, can I get access if I want it? And then, I can get access, but I can't afford it.
Additionally, in the most rural parts of Bunkin County, the only service available to them will be satellite, which is both expensive and not effective at delivery service.
That's the rhythm.
Yeah. Pay the most for the worst.
Yeah. Thank you, that's helpful.
Where the conversation continues to get deeper is on the right, where we're talking about quality of access. In this case, blue is bad. I'm not going to force you to try to read that. I'm just going to shift to the next slide and show you kind of what we saw. So again, blue dots are saying, my quality of access is not adequate. And so we saw kind of three pockets. There's more than that, but we're just trying to simplify it. So this sandy mush area here on the left, we continue to see questions about the quality of the access here. Tons of blue dots. What I would say is that sandy mush community, as you know, is fairly well organized around this topic, and so they got the word out in a strong way. Where we also sort of see some gaps is just south of Barnardville, or whatever area it's the Reeves Creek area, probably, we call it. So again, some pockets of inadequate service. So again, some pockets of inadequate service. And then over here in sort of the southeast, so the Grove River area, seeing again some gaps. Shouldn't be surprising to us. We kind of know where we don't have access. We've heard about it. But it was good to have that quantifiable data that we can then take to providers and say, here's the actual data. It's not anecdotal, this is objective. Here's where we have gaps.
Have you talked to the Grove River, about the company that ended up letting, laid out, laid out access at the fire department?
That's correct.
That there was a company that makes more towers that could have access in there?
That's absolutely right. And so Commissioner, that, that company is Skyrunner. And what we will do is, and I'll talk about this in just minutes, we're going to hold close to a provider meeting in the coming months, and they would be invited to that meeting to participate along with other providers as well. All right. So we kind of got ahead on cost, but here are a few additional questions or observations about cost. So 47.4% of respondents has said, respondents that services are too expensive. And so too expensive, that's kind of relative, you know, we're all different. 24% of those respondents said that the average cost of their services were greater than $75 a month. And so I can sell you that to more than I pay, so that was kind of my barometer. I'll bet 12%, I'll bet 24%, 12% paid greater than $100 in line just to get broadband. In many cases, I'd extrapolate the quality of service probably isn't that good for that high, for that cost. When we asked respondents why they don't subscribe, period, why do you not have internet, period? The response combined was it was either unavailable, can't get it, or it's too slow, don't want it. 75.9%. We also asked the question, well, do you have bad service? Is that because you're paying a minimal amount? Do you need to upgrade? Over 60% claim that they did an upgrade because there wasn't a better service available.
So should I take the survey? But I mean, some of those dots out there on the left where the, where it's service is bad and slow. And the reason I said it, you know, a lot of people will discuss the phone. I mean, mine was terrible, so I, I won't mention period, but the initials were AT&amp;T. I mean, you're just really trying to decide between, okay, well, I'll go to the satellite or I'll do this. And you know, talk to 10 people and they say, oh no, you don't want to do that. You don't want to go from where you're at to this. There's no really good answer on who's the, who's the protocol.
That's right.
Frustrating part is, so you pay X number of dollars, whether it's 50, 60, 70 dollars, and then a year later, it's, it's slowed down. And then there's, then they have to make a decision on whether to call the third, to switch and, you know, get you a price code and all that stuff, which is foolish. So if they were doing this, I, you know, there was a part of me that was saying, you know, why are we doing all of this? Because I know what they want to have, you know, and came more or less cool where it is. And, but having the information to be able to seek out barriers is probably the next thing to do.
Exactly. The quote that I'll steal from Keith Conover, who works for NC, Department of Information Technology, NC DIT. He says, "The broadband is market-driven, not regulated." And that's exactly what it is. It's a utility where supply and demand is king, but there's no regulation to require service in a way that would, would postal mail or something of that nature. So it's, it's a tricky area, which is why, as we transition the next steps, what's coming next? So we'll, we'll be back, Sarah and I, with Keith Conover from NC DIT, to brief you in September on what we're doing next. And that big next moment is a provider meeting. And we feel it's really important to get in front of y'all because NC DIT is going to manage this meeting for us. That way they can provide kind of a firewall between us and providers, as a government and a private entity. And the purpose will be to sort of show the providers, one, invite them all, you know, so you're already here, Skyrunner, you're already here, AT&amp;T, but maybe you're on the west coast and you wanted to get into an east coast market. Why do we do that? We're just trying to increase competition. It's basic supply and demand. Goal, given the data, what can you, what can you do for us? Here's what our towers are, here's what our gaps are, what services can you provide that will assist us in addressing some of these gaps? Again, not a new process, not something we came up with. Keith has done this 12 times.
It's part of the state's broadband plan to implement in this process. Additionally, it tells your existing incumbent providers where more people are angry. And what, what we've seen in other counties is that they automatically, actually during the survey process even, will start to get ahead of the problem before they start losing customers. So there's a lot of outputs that we won't see results from directly. They got, they don't have to come before the commissioners, but your people just get better service and you didn't have to do all that much to make it happen.
So we'll provide additional details in September about that. Purpose of that meeting, y'all are welcome to join, but it's not meant to be a board meeting per se, or really a meeting where we just yell at our providers. It's not really the goal. Our goal is to get them the information so that they can provide quality service or improve it, so.
Are there, are there policies that we should consider that would be helpful in terms of, you know, fostering this? And second, in terms of the inventory of vertical assets, do we have some that are underutilized and could be good, you know, hosting locations, I guess, for infrastructure? Does that look promising or did it, you know?
It does look promising. So we'll, we'll be working with staff here to amend some of the policies that do exist, especially for getting on towers. I understand there's some logistics with who owns property and some of that that we'll need to work through and see if we can still go in or it's directly, but I, it's very promising.
So these are, these are mostly not tall things that are on publicly owned property, but you're just kind of looking out there in the community like, where are things that could be infrastructure? But they're mostly private property, private, so there's not necessarily like any kind of existing site control to, for this particular purpose, that would have to be, you know, someone would have to work on that. Either one of the providers or.
The, some of the towers that you own are pretty strategically placed on unserved areas, but the land that the towers are on could be questionable and how the lease existed. But we need to work, there, there are examples in other counties where if you own a tower, you get a lease fee off of that, for that space. But the way that the county might amend that is that if you're doing it in a rural area, maybe it's less of a lease fee or not a lease fee for a certain number of months until they get a customer base established. So those are the kind of things we want to work to get in place, especially coming up on this provider meeting, to have some ideas.
And have you looked at where there are not tall things, but it would be good to have tall things? And if we own property in those places, you know, maybe we can build some infrastructure, right? Or help facilitate that in places where we already have some land, maybe a public, public land?
Yeah, one of the projects that he funded in FY20 budget, capital plan is the Garrett Creek Tower. So that's a key example. We've got initial conversations on using state assets as well as can be, because it's another government entity, the purpose can be a challenge, but we're working on that. We will be doing a tower tour in about two weeks. And the purpose is literally, because you know, towers, it's about space on the tower, literally. So looking at towers that have potential and hope to bring back to y'all some options, you know? If you did X, Y, and Z, or you changed this policy, you'd be able to open up this covered area, stuff like that.
I don't know if it's, probably not doable. I mean, I made sense, but my mind went to, what if there was a tower that you fired from? Boom, you're covered. And then try those there, the old brown wood one, fire party. But I mean, there's, and I think there actually is one behind, up for home.
That's correct.
I don't know if that's on our property.
It's, it's on their property. We use part of it at least. Yeah.
That is the purpose behind the tower tour, that we can identify all those assets, what we own and what we don't, and we can market it.
I, I toured it because I was stationed a couple ago. Why didn't you put that down in front of mine?
And are parallel conversations happening in neighboring counties?
The timing of this, we did, Madison County was already on, we started this, but the other three, in the Land of Sky, Henderson, Transylvania, Monmouth, all happened in the same time. So we're having similar conversations with those three counties right now.
Great. Would it be exciting to hear any ideas that are generated to the first part of your question, which is there anything at the level of board action on policy or that we might be able to do either as a county or as a consortium of counties addressing the same issue?
All right. Hey Sarah, thanks for coming down. Tim, thank you as well. All right. That gets us through.
Before we go, just to Google this, just someone reminded me that we have to keep showing us today, we do certain things. This is our first work.
Welcome to Monmouth County. We're so glad to have you on the management team. All right. So let's talk about how this meeting is working for everybody. You know, I've heard some different comments from folks about, yeah, so not going to speak for anybody, feel free to have everyone to chime in. What I hear is people saying they like having this meeting. They like having the ability to kind of preview some stuff before we are actually voting on it. I've heard, but I've heard some questions about, is this the best time of day for it? I've heard, I've heard a few members talk about, what if we moved it more into the afternoon? So we kind of come over, you know, talk a little bit before the meeting, but not have kind of this midday meeting and then, you know, some, for some folks, it's kind of coming in and out. So some sentiment may need to do something closer to the five o'clock meeting. And I've also heard some, some support for, for moving this meeting to the regular commission chamber. So those are a few of the ideas I've, I've heard. What are, would anybody want to kind of jump in and share thoughts about any of those items?
Honestly, feedback, what we did was to work on it, to work on it, upstairs. And, you know, setting all this up takes a bit of time, that's fine. But it's just like, sure, we get to have a discussion, but sure, sitting behind me. If I'm sitting upstairs, he's looking at me, I'm looking at him. And that's the way I want it. I want the people sitting out there that they look at me and, that, that's the way it should be working. Not a circle table with people behind you. A lot of stuff right here. Sometimes you don't even see the staff because of these poles and stuff. So that's why I'd like to see it moved to neutral time. At this very clock, they give me an hour, 3:30 minutes or 2:30 at night, but move it upstairs in our chamber where we don't have to sit up every time we do this. Walk in, or sit down, it's done.
So all the time, you're off the location. And the reason why it wasn't upstairs in chambers, when people look at this, is separate the fact that we're not voting at all. So the separation of location was important to let people recognize, because this is shown on the.
We can do the same thing upstairs over. We don't have to vote upstairs either. We go into meetings up there and just have a closed session, we close it, we walk back in the room, then we open it back up when we come out. So it's not, it's not that big a deal. I think it might, I think that anytime you're starting a, a series of meetings and you have a few, there's certainly nothing wrong with, with trying up there at three o'clock and see how that works. I do like the fact that it's closer to the, to the meeting because I'm going to go and try to, other than go and get me a sandwich, I'm going to figure out what to do in the next couple hours. I usually push it upon that and go up work in the office, so I'm going to be here, but if it's more convenient for everybody to try it there. Try it upstairs, I mean, I don't see a reason not to try that. See how it works.
I like moving it closer to the five o'clock meeting as well. In terms of where we have it, I actually like having it here because it does give us that separation of what we're doing here versus in the chambers. But definitely support moving it a little later in the day.
I really appreciate the structure here and also think tweaking it makes a lot of sense. I, timing, I'm sort of agnostic about whatever I prefer. I think the global housing and early childhood committees might have to adjust our standing times, but I'm sure that can be done. I like doing it here because it does feel like a different kind of setting and I think the chamber is such a, it's just, it's such a formal setting, which is good in some ways, but I think for these kind of discussions, I like the opportunity to interact with staff. I like the opportunity to interact with so many different staff, because I'm getting to know more staff. There, once in a while, there's an item on these agendas, I can't think of one necessarily today, but where it feels like it might fit on the five o'clock agenda equally as a county manager update or a just staff level presentation, something that, you know, I think it's nice to imagine that we have people tuning into this and that. I think if folks are going to follow a county commission meeting, it's much more likely to be a five o'clock one. And if there's something that we know, there's a lot of interest around or that just, so that's one adjustment I might sort of ask us to think about is, and I think it would be good to set up some protocol wherein if people are talk, like, we have every chance to speak to people from here versus kind of back and forth in the, in the space. So there's going to be that back and forth, that there's a little more structure around it and that it sort of follows the decorum and protocol we use anytime we're talking with other folks.
Robert, what do you think?
Two o'clock, four o'clock, nine o'clock, doesn't matter to me. I usually try to make Tuesday my long day to schedule it, but I, I just don't like having where you have to turn around to talk out. I mean, if you could do a setting where we could see everybody, I mean, the main thing is, is watching eye contact is what I'm really big on, is seeing how other people react to what's being said, is why I would love to do it upstairs.
Al, what do you think?
Fine, whatever you do. I guess I have more time than most. And on Tuesday, I'm like Robert, though, I usually try to leave the whole day open, you know? But my concern is that we keep these work sessions like they are because we get a lot done. And I think we can, you know, discuss a lot more where we have it.
All right. I don't, the, the, the.
I agree with Al that it's important that we have the sessions that we can talk. I do like the structure where it's more informal, a more formal setting. I want staff to be engaging, you know, and they're going to present to you. So I like the informality of it, but I, sorry about your question.
Okay, understood. Well, I appreciate you, I think appreciate your suggestion to do these. I think that I agree it's been a good addition to how we kind of start looking at issues, especially when they're not ready to vote on right now, but are, you know, when things are starting and we can have some, learn some stuff, give some informal feedback along the way. I would, you know, I think I would lean towards the afternoon at three, maybe even 3:30. And, and I think I would, you know, I, I definitely have mixed feelings about the location. I like the, I kind of like this as the, it is a little bit more informal and I kind of like that, but I, I also do think it is a little awkward with people sitting by. And I don't know how you would change it to fix that. I've, I've thought about this room and I don't know, I mean, if you have this, I mean, we can't really just go in one direction. So I don't know if there's a way to solve that. So I would, I would, I guess I would lean towards, towards moving it upstairs, even though I like some aspects of being down here, I would lean towards doing it upstairs. So I know we're, we're not all on the same page on each of these, so, but I think we just, you know, just, we do need big decisions. So what I'm just doing is like, and I know we don't usually vote on this here, but all we're having is voting on where we meet. So we can, we can vote on this here. We can, because it's not a policy decision, we're just deciding where to have this meeting, you know?
It's one of the things we need to vote, if consensus is at, we can say it's a great idea.
We did a resolution though.
We did try it up there.
To set it here and at this time, so you would have to do another resolution.
But we passed a resolution saying it will be here. All right. So we'll need to. So we'll need to admit, modify the resolution to shift the time. Okay. Well, that sounds good. Why don't we do that and we can always, you know?
We do it at three o'clock upstairs.
Start, yeah, so we'll bring that resolution on the 20th, so if it did the first minute in September, we can advertise it.
Three o'clock.
I think that sounds, sounds good. And this could be an ongoing, you know, we keep thinking about it. There, there are definitely pros and cons, I think, you know, to each, each of these questions. One other thing I would just say too, just in terms of comment, I think these meetings are good, I, but I don't think we should necessarily, I think this question about the, put an item on the agenda for this meeting versus the five o'clock meeting, that is an important question, right? Because I think in some ways, the five o'clock meeting will always get more public attention than this. So in some ways on issues that we think are, especially if they're issues that are of real public interest, in some ways I would, I would suggest, let's put it on the five o'clock meeting with the understanding it's for informational purposes only, this is just the first discussion, not the voting discussion, but things that are really important to us. I think in some ways, if we put too much of that on these meetings, I think it diminishes the five o'clock meeting. We've had some of these meetings where this is a longer meeting than five, the five o'clock meeting, and that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me. meeting, and that doesn't seem, that doesn't seem right to me.
And everything here will come to you at five o'clock.
Eventually, yes, eventually this year.
So, this is actually using our heads up to know that we're still working on items and you will see these again, but at five o'clock, a lot of times it's not ready for us to talk about it beyond, just use our heads up.
So, I think, I think, you know, to, to your, your point, let me see if we're on the, on the same page. Um, what you don't want to happen is something in, in the pre-meeting or this type of environment where that it comes to us and then, cause it looks like there might not be enough, you know, it wasn't that warm and fuzzy, you know, as far as our conversations and it never shows up on the table. You know, we, but, cause then you're making those decisions in that, in that meeting and we're not, we're not getting full public, you know. That makes sense.
Yeah, but, and you can, yes, I heard what you were saying as far as if it's here and you don't like what we're talking, what we're in for.
Yeah, yeah.
If you don't like it, you're ready to do more work. And you get where it needs to be, but it will come to you eventually. Nothing that we would hold back, we'll bring it to you whether or not it's a little bad.
Sure. But I guess part of it's like, and again, I don't think we've done this, but like, we would want the five o'clock meetings to be like the only time you hear about that, that issue, you know? In some cases, I think we want to spend some time there too, just because again, look at the, the room here, we've got a couple of very dedicated citizens who attend and some media, but this frankly just is a much lower profile meeting and so I think that it's, it's just important for the public to, to kind of be aware of what we're working on.
But I mean, some conversations come out like, you know, what you said, Chairman, that if, if, if three of you, I mean, we're talking about this, if, if three people want to put this on the agenda, you know, you know, then, then hey, that's, that's what this conversation is about. If somebody wants to put that on the agenda, you know, let's move it and, and do it. So, I see a lot of that type of thing coming out, just because we have an opportunity to talk. I do hope we talk as much up there as we do here. I do not like the way this is laid out, okay? But I do hope we talk as much up there or more. You know, I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm honest. But I'm just saying that, that, that the conversation needs to be, uh, I mean, we've got to have our decorum, but we don't, we don't want to hold anything back because, I mean, you know, Brownie's done a good job in, in reeling that type of thing in. And so, we don't need, I mean, we need to be able to say respectfully what's on our mind and get it out. And we need to have those decisions.
All right. Good, good, good conversation. Um, hey, before we adjourn, um, one item is on the agenda tonight and there's information in your packets is that the internal audit director recommendation, and this is coming from the audit committee, correct? And the commission does not need to vote on this, do we, or do we? Or is this just simply that we're going to, yeah, this is an important position, this is a position Terry Wells, I'm sorry, Terry Orange has had and, um, so this is.
I need to check the bylaws, I think.
I think on the agenda, it's listed as a presentation item, not as a voting item.
Okay. So, maybe that's why. All right. Let me verify that.
Okay. If we need to move it to a voting, I mean, if we need to vote on it, we'll vote on it. But I just wanted to bring everyone's attention to like, you have information on, I think on the, on the website, it just says this item, but here's the information of who it is. So, we wanted people to have a chance to understand who the candidate is before we have to either hear about it or actually vote on it tonight. So, all right.
And the internal audit reports directors, right?
I think the bylaws you set up, they report to each of that audit committee.
The audit committee.
Reporting line in the, okay. There's some reporting line. There's not structure.
The auditor does can go around the manager if need be and go direct to the board commissioners, yes. But yes, the structure of hiring and firing is on the recommendation of the audit committee.
And then who makes the hiring decision though? The manager or the commissioner?
I'm trying to verify that now.
Okay, all right. We'll, we'll verify that, all right.
I think it's you guys too.
It seems, it seems.
Seems like the project is the upright.
Yeah. All right, great. Anybody, any other comments for me?
I have one thing that I just want to say and I'll be very brief. I've attended the two listening sessions that Sheriff Miller has had in District Two. They've both been fairly well attended and the one in Black Mountain had a whole host of different questions than I had last week in Weaverville. But what I want to share with y'all, the one from Weaverville last week, the question that we ended on was as residents of Buckland County, how can we support law enforcement to the point of it being a desirable career for folks graduating college and, um, and high school and wanting to be a part of law enforcement? So, I just wanted to share that. I thought that was a really interesting conversation that's starting to bubble up at a time where law enforcement is really struggling to recruit people to want to serve in those jobs. So, Sheriff Miller, Chief Deputy Everhart really took those comments to heart and I'm looking forward to seeing how we can also support them in those efforts to hire and to recruit.
Good, thank you. That's a great question.
So, one thing I got is, uh, us doing these meetings, I like it and like time does not matter to me, three o'clock would be good, but I don't think any of us want to go back to the three-on-three meetings.
No, we don't.
No, it was just scattered out for you and a lot of others for five hours. We stand, like, packing it in here, so.
Everybody's questions.
Exactly.
Yeah, but I mean, you really require three meetings because there's three, three, and then I need to, that was on Zoom. So, it's actually three different presentations and that's just not a good way to do, to do it, right? This is much better.
God, you know, there's a, for, for, it was one-on-one until I was going to sit one about seven. We don't want to go there when you got time, but.
I'd ask more than a minute.
So, can we? You know, my only comment is I, is I want, I want the, I want this communication to be open. I want it out there and I want us talking about it. I don't want people thinking that, you know, that two commissioners or, or however number of commissioners are talking or trying to manipulate things, that staff is doing X, Y, and Z, all that stuff. You know, we put all this out so people can see that, see how we discuss and, and get everything out, because I don't want to be surprised. Public doesn't want to be surprised, I don't want to be surprised, you know, by anything, whether you want it, you know, the agenda or anything. I think for me, this, this is, this helps me, it helps the public.
That's better than my. Actor Space with books.
Yep.
That was from Rebecca's.
That was for Rebecca Ryan. And I'm sorry.
All right. Food, food, all right. We're during the case of, I believe. All right, we reviewed the agenda at the pre-meeting earlier today at noon, so I believe we are ready to call this meeting to orders. And Max, if you're prepared to start the introductory video, that'd be great. to order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone please rise and endorse the pledge.
I declare this as a pledge of allegiance in the United States of America and to be a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for being with us this evening. At our last county commission meeting, we welcomed one of our new assistant county managers, Sybil Tate, to her new role in Buckland County. And before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like to also welcome DaKeisha Wesley, who is with us this evening, who is our other new assistant county manager. DaKeisha has served as the assistant administrator for Lake County, Illinois. She brings nineteen years of experience in local government, including her work for Lake County and twelve years working in the community of Fort Worth, Texas. DaKeisha, we are so glad to have you as part of our management team here in Buckland County and we are really looking forward to meeting you. So, welcome. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's take a moment to acknowledge the value of all of the people who have public service as their calling. We appreciate our teachers and all the people who make our schools work each day, our law enforcement, firefighters and other first responders who protect homes and lives, the people who help make sure that our social safety network, our, our social safety net works for the children, the elderly and families, and to all the other people who show up for work each day to work for our community. Let's have a moment of silence for prayer and reflection for the many public servants who make Buckland County a better place to live. Please join me in a moment of silence. Um, I'd like to quickly review the ethics reminder for the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda that the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on your board? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the board at this meeting. All right. Commission, we, we have a closed session matter that we need to attend to and we need to do it in front of the meeting as, um, Ron Payne has a family obligation that would prevent him from, uh, being with us at the, um, back end of our meeting. So, uh, we need to have a motion to go into closed session to consult with an attorney. Um, Ms. Hockaday, do you have the language for us?
Yes, pursuant to County District One, three, dash, eight, eleven, eight, three, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege of the attorney and the public body.
Right, there's a motion to second. Uh, we do not expect this to be a very long, um, closed session, so we expect to be back pretty quick and, um, we'll get back into open session when we come back. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, we're in closed session. Is there a motion to go back into open session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, go back to the session. All right, the next order of business is to, um, approve the consent agenda and, uh, to follow the remainder of the agenda as published. Is there a motion to approve?
So, we.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, you can move that one item.
Um, so on my agenda, it's actually, um, next up.
Oh.
So, I think it is, I think we're there. Uh, which is to consider the, um, recommendation of hiring the internal audit director. Okay, but before we go there, I did neglect to announce that there are parking validation. Uh, if you use the county's, uh, parking deck or, um, transit to attend this meeting, you can get validation for your parking pass or transit pass, uh, from one of the officers who was at the meeting this evening. So, feel free to see them on the way out, that's valid for today. All right. Next up on the agenda, um, is consideration to hire a new internal audit director and Larry Harris, um, who is the chair of the audit committee that's here to explain this item. Larry, thank you for being with us.
Mr. Chairman, and the rest of us, um, I'm coming as the chair of the audit committee and, um, just to remind you, um, as a public as to why I'm here and that is because our group for internal audit, Terry Orange, who's over at the finance. And so, that, that is what we needed to fill. And then I would also remind, um, both you all and the public that under the internal audit charter, uh, the organization of, um, of the, of the, of the internal audit function is such that, and I read the record for the charter, that the internal audit director reports administratively to the county manager and, and with clear and recognized access and reporting to the Buckland County Commissioners and the audit committee. And so, in order to honor that organizational structure, um, the committee agreed with our county manager on a process by which we would select a candidate to bring to you this evening and, um, uh, for, would you consider for the next director of internal audit? And so, the process was this, that, um, the county manager would, um, would work with HR, post the position to start the process and with that, there were eleven qualified candidates, one withdrew from consideration. The remaining ten candidates, and again, this is, uh, approved by the audit committee and delegated over to the county manager to go through this three-part process. The remaining ten were phone interviewed by a four-person panel that was comprised of the county manager and Warren and two members of HR. So, that was your four-member panel. And the highest score, scored candidates were invited with interviews with the audit subcommittee. And I would remind you that that subcommittee is your two commissioners who serve, uh, Mr. Presley and White Eye, and the chair of the committee comprises the internal audit subcommittee. And so, the subcommittee then, with the county manager, with the representation from HR, interviewed the two top candidates and, um, we selected one of those candidates and took that candidate to the full committee. Um, at the full committee, um, we, um, we did a Skype interview and the committee voted by majority vote unanimously, I believe, although we have one member absent, to make recommendation to the commissioners, uh, for a new, uh, internal audit director that would be Tricia Burnett. Tricia, uh, was born and raised in Asheville. She received her undergraduate degree in accounting from UNCA, her master's degree in accounting from Western Carolina, so she covers all the required bases for higher education in Buckland County. She holds CPA licenses in North Carolina and Oregon and is, um, is, is, uh, as well as the International Certified Internal Auditor Certification and the Certified Fraud Examiner Certification. Tricia spent most of her career in public service in Western North Carolina. She worked the majority of her time at the Henske Office in the state auditor with audit responsibilities over state. audit responsibilities over state universities, community colleges, and clerk's of Superior Court. She also served as director of internal audit for UNC Nashville. For the past four and a half years, she has lived in Eugene, Oregon, drawing to the opportunity of helping to create the University of Oregon's first-ever Office of Internal Audit. She currently leads a team of four staff that includes three audit professionals and support professionals. She developed a partnership with the College of Business to provide opportunities for students to learn and work in the internal audit field. Her goal is to integrate internal audit into everyday operations of any organization she works with, including and given the opportunity to do so, Buncombe County, she strongly believes in partnering, collaborating, and communicating with those she works with, as well as leveraging all resources possible to ensure that best practices are in place and allow mission and objectives of Buncombe County to be met. So with that, I submit to you, Tricia Burnett, for your consideration for the major internal audit.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Harris. Appreciate all the work it went into going through this search process for this support position. Harry Orange, of course, has done a great job, and is important for the organization. So we appreciate the time for the day.
Sure, thank you.
So, Commission, is there anything? Thank you. The policy asks that the Buncombe County Commission consider the recommendations of the internal audit committee, so we have received that recommendation. Is there a motion in response to the recommendation?
I'll move it through.
Second.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Further discussion?
Being a member of the committee, a subcommittee, we're fortunate to have someone of Tricia's caliber to move into the position as internal auditor. And in many ways, one, she's a graduate of the University of North Carolina at Asheville, and she's from here, so that gives us added, you know. But when you look at it, though, there's no comparison when we looked at the people as far as she's competent with her undergraduate degree and a master's in account. So she's our thought from the ones to be interviewed, I thought.
Great, great. All right, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Again, thank you very much to the work of everyone on the audit committee for your work and recommendation for this position. She's not present with us right now. Very good. Okay, the next item on our agenda is we would like to, as a county commission, provide recognition to a really special person in our community, Mr. Gene Bell, for 25 years of service in our community, and so we have a resolution that we would like to present, so I'd like to ask all the county commissioners to join us down at the podium and to ask Mr. Bell, please join us as well.
This is an easy one for me to read, because not only are Gene and I long-term friends over these years, but we're also neighbors, so I ask you not to give you any insight into some of our conversations. No, thank you for wanting in. County of Buncombe, proclamation on Gene Bell. Whereas Gene Bell has been employed for 25 years as director of maintenance and construction, and then chief executive officer of the Asheville Housing Authority, and since 2005, executive director of the Bravard Housing Authority. And whereas Gene has left a positive mark on every tenant and employee of the Asheville Housing Authority, public and elected officials of Buncombe County, the city of Asheville, state of North Carolina, and U.S. government officials. And whereas Gene continues to advocate and fight for all citizens of our community, and whereas Gene is committed to his involvement in the community, he has served on several boards, most recently the Asheville City School Board for eight years, where he served as chairman for six years, the Board of Directors for the North Carolina Housing Authority, RISD and retention pool, the Board of Directors of Asheville-Buncombe Technical Community College. Gene was recently appointed to the Buncombe County Planning Board, and he serves as chairman of the board. And whereas Gene's primary interest continues to be improving the quality of life for the residents of Asheville and Buncombe County, and securing a positive future for youth within our community, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows. First, that August 6, 2019 be and hereby is proclaimed as Gene Bell Day in Buncombe County. Second, that all Buncombe County citizens are encouraged to recognize the many contributions of Gene Bell to our community. And third, that this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted the sixth day of August 2019, Board of Commissioners for Buncombe County, by Brownie Newman, Chairman.
Unfortunately, Robin Ramsey from Senator Burr's Western Office was out of town and couldn't be here this evening, so she asked me, and it is my pleasure and honor to deliver to you the flag that was flown over our United States Capitol in your honor.
Can you have something with the flag, or a really big box?
Right, I just wanted to thank you all, and as proud as I am, but I'm also that humble, I want you to realize that some of the successes I've experienced and I've gotten credit for have been a result of you all's support. The two schools that were made with Bill, you all funded us to be able to do that, and without that, I would just have been board member for eight years, and that wouldn't have happened. I want to just mention that the middle school in Isaac Dixon, if anybody gets a chance to look at it, they're both state of the art, and they're both huge next school, and that's two of my proudest moments, and I all experienced it with me. And I wanted to share with you my latest adventure with the chosen group. We could not have sent 130 kids, 123 kids, without the support of Buncombe County. So I would like to, for my family, but I can't contact the details, I was able to accomplish all this by myself, but it would be a lot, and I have these people here that are my extended family, if they would stand that all of those people are just a part of my life. And I just want to say lastly, that we all too quickly and too frequently think of our accomplishments, that they're based on our efforts, our knowledge, and our intelligence. But very few people, if any, ever accomplished anything, provide support from everybody, and this community has helped to make me successful with this, and I'm very plattered. I want to thank you again, and I'll talk to Robin, and this is really a big deal for me. So my last thing, I'll ask Mike Woods to come up. We have the thank you note from the kids that went to Branson, Missouri, and we want to share those with you, and we have them broken out by the district that they live in, and so that you'll get a clear example of what we're doing and how much they appreciate your efforts. So I'm not going to be telling you I want to share the reward with you, because I don't. Yeah, I will tell you about you, it wouldn't happen. I need to do it for you. It's not a excuse. Mike, I'd like to come up sort of when I get home.
By the way, you really have smart shoes on.
All right.
The first is a hearing on economic development for the Mountain Community Capital Fund, and Tim Love will present the assignment.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. No slides this evening, just a discussion on the Mountain Community Capital Fund. You should be familiar with this program, it's been before this board on two separate occasions, but as a refresher, the Mountain Community Capital Fund is a small business loan guarantee program. It's a partnership with the county of Buncombe, as well as the city of Asheville, and three CDFIs, Community Development and Financial Institutions, which include Mountain Mizworks, Self Help, and Carolina Small Business. As we've done this year with other economic development appropriations, the statute does require that these appropriations are brought before you in the form of a public hearing, even though they've been approved by you through a budgetary process. So this evening, we are asking for a public hearing to allow the public to comment on the Mountain Community Capital Fund and the $200,000 associated with that small business loan guarantee program. However, we are not asking for any type of vote from this board. Additionally, we're not asking for any additional funding. This is funding that's already been appropriated and included in the FY '20 budget. And a couple of dates, just as refreshers, this first came before you at the October 17th, 2017, regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners when this first approved, and then was brought back before you on October 6, 2018, at which point you approved the county to move forward with the actual agreement that created the Mountain Community Capital Fund. So if there are no questions at this time, I'll turn it to you all and ask the public hearing to go.
I have another question. So when will the, when will the, do you know when the $200,000 will be awarded, and you know, what's the process on that? Do you know any information on that?
That's correct. So at this point, it's sitting in our general fund, it hasn't moved, will not move until the position of public hearing, at which point we would transfer the funding to Self Help, who serves as the custodian of the fund, which means they hold the funding until it needs to be used. No funding would be sort of allocated without approval of Mountain Community Capital Fund Operating Committee, which is a committee made up of staff from the county as well as the city, and includes representatives from the community that were appointed by this board as well. Thanks.
All right. I will put in the public hearing on this matter at 5:37 PM. Are any members of the public who wish to comment? Mr. Yelnam, and I have three minutes for public comment.
Won't take three minutes. $200,000, I would, I'll be sending an email to our county manager with this request. I want to know what line item that $200,000 is coming from, and what else is in that line item for this type of investment in 2020. So, though that question be sent to her, and I think that's something that should have been reported here in this public hearing, because remember, we want to encourage people to go to the internet and monitor and watch the dispersion of money, therefore, they will be more conscious of what the county commissioners are doing, and how much you do do for the community. We can also catch you if you're not watching.
Okay. Anyone else? Right, seeing anyone else, I will close the public hearing at 5:38 PM. And, Tim, where Tim go? Oh, right here, okay, like looking back here, yeah, right here. So, Tim, again, this is coming from the county's economic development budget. Any other details you would share in response to the question about, you know, where the funds are already allocated from for this small business loan program? That's right. Jennifer Barnett, can I put you on the spot?
Don't worry about it, you can introduce that. I'll, I'll, I'll.
It's okay, it's a fair question.
You'll, you'll see out here anyway.
No, we'd like to know, sir.
No, so I, so actually, I don't want to contradict him, but if I remember correctly, and I can certainly get this information back to you, we actually took action, I do believe during fiscal year 2019, to establish those funds from the general fund to, available in the multi-year fund, which I do believe was our, like a special revenue fund. I can get that information for you, but it is an already established budget in that amount, to my recollection, and will supply you that information.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, no actions needed on this item, it's already been voted on, this is simply holding the required public hearing. So, Tim, thanks for your, and thanks for your vote, thanks. Okay, next up, we have three rezoning items, and Joshua Freeman will be presenting each one of these. The first one is the, I'm pronouncing it right, rezoning.
Yes, thank you. Got the public vote. Okay, so the first application before you is the Rezoning Application. This is case number ZPH 2019-22. I'm going to state on the record that this application was, or this public hearing was prevalent as in accordance with county code and state law. The screen before you shows the various states involved in the public hearing notification process. The applicants are Robert and Laurie Perka. The address of the property is 119 Buncombe Drive in Squananoa. This project has, this application has kind of been around for a while, it's been through several iterations of review, so a little unusual, I'll kind of give the history of this just briefly. On May 20th, the planning board first considered this rezoning in its original form. On June 18th, the applicant withdrew the rezoning application prior to a hearing before this board, with the idea of revising their application to a smaller area. On June 19th, the applicant submitted a revised rezoning plan. On July 1st, the planning board was scheduled to meet, but they were unable to achieve a forum that night, so it was continued to the next meeting, July 15th, the planning board then did review and forward a recommendation to this party. And on August 8th, the Board of Commissioners decided to have a public hearing on this case. Commissioners recommended to have a public hearing on this case. Some property information, and then there's a few edits here that have, I'm making based on some revised information. Total property of the original application was to rezonate the entire property, 14.7 acre, 0.7 acres, from RLD Residential, which is residential low density, to R1 Residential. The rezoning area was revised to 1.05 acres, based on that schedule that I've previously summarized. I had originally said 1.7. The applicant submitted an actual survey document. My estimate was based on mapping system internally. This is actually a field-based survey. So, the acreage is actually smaller than I thought it was. Hence the change. There's one existing single-family home on the property and the property is serviceable by public guard and public survey. This gives you a fore and after. If you choose to approve this rezoning tonight, the screen on the map on the left shows the current zoning in RLD. The map on the right shows the small yellow patched area to the east, far eastern corner of the property. That is what's being discussed for rezoning. The rest of the 14, the remaining 13 acres of the overall 14-acre tract is not part of this public hearing. Comparing the two zoning districts, RLD is primarily intended to provide applications for low-density residential and related developments. Typically, in environmentally sensitive areas, steep slopes and fragile soils. R1, on the other hand, is primarily to provide single-family and two-family residential uses in areas where water and sewer is generally present. Give you some numbers to compare the two districts. On the left-hand table, these are some of the standards that are in the ordinance. Forty-three thousand, one acre, 43,560 square feet, minimum lot size in RLD. Under R1, with water and sewer, you can actually get down to an 8,000 square foot block. Maximum total units per acre in RLD is two, and R1 is 10. The setbacks are fairly similar in situations where you have water and sewer. The rear yard setback changes about five feet and the side yard setback changes about seven feet, is reduced under R1. Table on the right gives you kind of a real-world scenario for this property. Total acres subject to rezoning is 1.05 or just a little bit more than 46,000, 43, 46,000 square feet, sorry. The minimum lot size again is, is 43,000 square feet. Under R1, under R1, it's 8,000 square feet. Given those numbers on the, on the rezoning area, if it were not to change zoning, you could get two dwelling units in that area with the proposed rezoning. For single-family residential development, we estimate you could get five real estate. On paper, you could do as many as 10 dwelling units. That's sort of in a vacuum of not factoring in driveways and rideways and setbacks and things like that. Practically speaking, around with single-family structures, you could, you could get five. So now we're getting into some of the comprehensive plan analysis, or the land use plan analysis variables. Land use plan recommends that we not upzone to a higher density classification when the elevation is over 2,500 feet above sea level. The revised rezoning is not, so it does comply. It also recommends not upzoning when the slope is greater, 25, is greater than 25%. A portion of the reduced rezoning area still is within that 25% or greater slope area. Most of these slopes are surrounding the existing home. You can kind of see on this map that there's a white kind of skinny rectangle. That's roughly where the existing home is sitting and then you have a cut slope behind it and a, a full slope below it. So, the existing 25% or greater slope, you're really kind of around according to that. But it is within that 25% slope or greater area. I do want to point out that our regulations don't begin restricting development until you hit 35% slope. So, our policy steers us all the way from slopes 25% or greater of regulations kicking in at 35%. High-hazard slip areas, there's a small block of, of high-hazard slope on the property in the rezoning area. That is the, the cut slope below the house and where the existing structures located. These images give you a sense of, you know, what's around the subject property from different perspectives. So here, you're looking north across the property. The yellow dot is roughly where the existing house is. Here, you're looking south across the property. Here, you're looking toward the east. And then here, you're looking toward the west. Land use plan analysis, it's kind of a mixed bag in this particular case. It is fairly distant from any transportation corridors. However, it is within reasonable proximity to water and sewer as it is into the site. As I mentioned earlier, it does have some 25% slope or greater on the property. It's not in the high elevation area. It does contain a small area of moderate slope stability and it's outside of a high-hazard area. Staff's perspective on this, and I do want to find out if you deviate from the planning board's recommendation, and I'll cover that in a moment. Staff's recommend, perspective is that the steep slope areas that were on the property, again, fall below a regulatory threshold and they're kind of, they're in this areas, they're very small. They're really a result of, to some extent, the grade that happened to support the existing home. And so they're, they're small and incidental. That is another perspective. The planning board's recommendation was originally by a vote of seven to one denial based on the original application. At the public hearing where the applicant withdrew their application and the item was sent back to the planning board, or withdrew the application and then resubmitted for reconsideration before the planning board, the vote did change from a three to three. So, it's a tie vote, whichever state law under our ordinance has the effect of being a negative regulation. So, the planning board recommends denial. Their basis for recommendation is really that, that 25% slope area. So, they've evaluated your policy, your policy kind of on space when you, when you look at it, it does steer you in that direction. Staff's recommendation is deviate respectfully from the planning board. It's really more about kind of the site and circumstances that are on the ground. The application, the applicant does have a presentation, but before I turn it over to the applicant, I will take any questions.
I do have a question. You just said that it was a three-three vote. The memo that was attached to the meeting adjourned tonight says it was a flat vote.
Can we get that presentation? I did something wrong. Yeah, I, that was a mistake I made in the initial, sort of, to the board. So, I corrected it since then, but the vote was actually true.
It was.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Josh.
Yes.
Say that in the mic so people can hear that, please.
Yeah. I just received that this afternoon, the updated presentation, and I did update it with what's online. You may have to refresh your, your website, but it has been updated to the new version.
Yeah, that was my error.
One other question. You said, so there's one house already on the property. And realistically, the difference between these two zoning options, realistically, what does it mean in terms of the number of homes you can build under existing versus the rezoned?
Absolutely. So, assuming we're talking about a single-family residential comparison, given the acreage and then you have driveways and driveway cuts and things like that, under the current zoning in that same footprint, you could do two dwellings.
Two total or two more?
Two total.
So, one of the existing, one of the more home.
Two total. Under, under the rezoning on that same footprint, you could do a maximum of five homes, including the existing homes.
So, maybe go four more.
So, that's correct.
That's correct.
And let me clarify that. Actually, in order to do that, you'd actually have to tear the existing home down and reconfigure the lots there. Where the current house is sitting, there's no way you could get more than two additional units there because it sits kind of in the middle of the parcel.
So theoretically, you could do more, but from a practical standpoint, probably it's a difference between one new home or two.
That's, that's steps.
No questions? All right, we'll want to go with the help of, oh, let's let the property owners give their presentation, then we'll open it. All right.
If you could pull the presentation back up. So...
Good evening Chairman, Board of Commissioners. My name is Michael Goford. I work here in the town. I'm a civil engineer and my company's high country engineering. Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and to listen to our rezoning request for the purpose. On the slide there, I want you to see the first thing that comes up. This is the plaque that they aired. They've already submitted this to the county planning department, which has continued upon its approval. And this is their intention of what they desire to do. If you look, there's an entire, on the left-hand side of the screen here, there's, you know, the remainder of the property that has probably this deep slope, it's higher elevation and so forth. That is not part of this rezoning. This is the plaque that we're looking at. So, they're showing three lots here with a proposed 45-foot rideaway, only to allow for access for that piece, that remainder of the parcel on the backside there. So, like Josh said, there's, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet for this zoning with water and sewer. The water sewer is right there in front of the piece of property that will require no sewer line extensions or water line extensions to serve as two additional units here, part of lots. They, they really couldn't do much more and keep the existing house. I immediately have regretted not taking a picture of the existing house provided this thing because the Uherkas have spent quite a bit of time and effort and their own money fixing that house up. I think if anybody were to drive by today and take a look at it, you'd realize it's not a house. It's a man-made building. And so, that is regret. They had to not do that. Here we are. I do have a couple of additional slides just to continue to show you some of the other homes surrounding within a four-mile of this piece of property, so you can kind of get an idea for what they are. I also want to point out the two additional lots on the front that are fronting there on Bullland Drive. They're at 22.2 acres, so keep that in mind, which is above the 8,000 square foot threshold. That, that 22.2 is minus seven for above the square feet. So, this house, you can see on the left side is from the GIS. This is their next-door neighbor here. You can see the typical house size there, what it looks like. They're on 0.31 acres right there. This is directly next door to them on that piece of property. This is just a couple houses down from there. Another moderately sized family house, 0.31 acres. That's the lot size there. Another house directly down. You can see that it's highlighted on the left where that parcel is in relation to the subject prop, subject property that we found there. Another reasonably sized, single-family home on 0.1 acres, very similar zoning. There's another house that's right down the road. It's on 0.29 acres. It's right there close to it. And lastly, this is the house that's right there as you drive in. It's close to them. It's on 0.27 acres, very tight footprint, very small house. The Uherka's indicated to me that this is their intention to continue to build something in this manner. It looks something like this, that has a small footprint on these two additional lots that they are requesting to have. I want to leave this, just so you can remember that this is what they're asking for. They're not asking for any of the back portion of the property to be rezoned, changed, anything with that. It's the, they're mainly focusing on creating, creating these two additional lots in this piece of property. I would like to request that after the public hearing portion, that we would be able to come back up and just clear up any things that have come out of that process if that is possible.
You might ask a question.
Sure.
So, but we are, this is a straight rezoning there, right? So, we're not approving the site plan. We're not approving straight rezoning. And I appreciate the schematic, but, you know, some of the concerns I think we've heard have been that there might be a lot more built on the property if it's rezoned. So, I mean, have other plans been shown that show more construction or is?
Not too long. I haven't prepared any. I have, I did see the Uherkas did, they did prepare a, another plaque that they provided to me that showed an additional three houses. Now, those were, those were exactly 8,000 square foot blocks. So, they were very tight footprint. But I think that does not reflect what this rezoning is asking for. That is only reflecting this 1.05 acres, which is what we're asking for. That was the one, I think it had some additional on the, on the top end to make the last block 8,000 square feet. So, that's the only plan that I've seen that I haven't prepared anything that would represent more than that, nor would, nor than, nor more than what I provided here as part of this presentation.
All right. Well, we're going to open the public hearing. And so, we'll do that now. I'm going to open the public hearing at 5:59 PM. Any members of the public wish to comment are welcome to do so. You'll have up to three minutes. You'll get, you have 30 seconds left. The lights will change. And when your time's up, please conclude your comments at that time. We want to be fair and give everyone the same amount of time. And just please share your name and where you live. You can give those to our clerk, yes, ma'am.
I'm just looking for, uh, to get a copy.
Go ahead. It's fine.
So, my name is Pam Teg. I live to the north of this property. So, I kind of have to drive through the issues that I'm raising. In the packet that I've given you, you'll see a number of pictures. The Uherkas have only graded the driveway. And this is the mess we have out in the road currently. They have attempted to put up silt fencing, but to no avail because the steep, the slope on that lot, water is running downhill out into the road. We have walkers, bicyclers, vehicles. Sunday, we had horseback riders. It is a grave concern to us that this is what we're looking at at this time. If you look at the next, this is the drawing that the gentleman referred to. And the, the issue for us is that that drawing had three lots plus the house front. This is like a ship-shaped, you know, a shape, whatever you call it, shape shifter. Everything moves. Every time someone brings up an issue, they change, you know, it was going to be two or three small houses. Now, the lots have changed. We've got two houses. And the fact is, if you agreed to rezonate this, there was absolutely nothing to stop them from putting those seven units. And if the lots are too small and they can't do it at one level, they can do it up. The pictures that the gentleman showed you, all those houses are on flat land. None of them are in a steep slope area. The last house she showed you, the little tiny house, actually is a slope and it goes down behind the house, not in front of the house. That would, it would run out onto the road. When we went to, oh, one at a time. When we went to the zoning meeting, the three people who voted against, Reddenberg, Martin, and Walter, were very concerned about the pictures and what we were looking at. And Ms. Walter wanted to make sure that her concern about this deep slope runoff was noted in those. I mean, she specifically asked for it to be noted. And I have one more. I'll come here in a minute. When Josh did his analysis, he gave you seven points why to approve it. He gave you two points not to approve it, or not to approve it. But when he did, he also mentioned that there were a lot of...
Your time's up. Sorry. Thank you for the information, Chip. All right.
Hello, my name is Michael Hayes. I'm here in basically three different sort of capacities. I'm here, I, I actually am the trustee and the beneficiary.
Hello, my name is Michael Hayes. I'm here in basically three different sort of capacities. I'm here, I actually am the trustee and the beneficiary of the trust that abuts their total parcel, the 14-acre parcel, 40 acres above it. I'm a resident of 58 Oldview Road, which is also above this property. And I'm also here representing the Woodlands Homeowners Association, which I'm the president of. That's a 12-unit subdivision that's at the top of Woodland Drive. Our homeowners don't support this petition. Just a couple things I'd say. I have seen another plat that was referred to. This, this thing's changed two or three times during the course of it. So I can't prepare with, with comments about that. And I see this moving today that's, that's different, that's only two, two additional houses, but it's got the same problem. If you, I've done, I've done, I'm a real estate developer. I've done three small subdivisions in around the county, two large subdivisions. So I'm pretty familiar with the requirements, but the issues here, I, I don't see, even in this new plan, I don't see any ingress regress to these lots. The only thing, the only way in, I looked at this property, I brought an engineer in to conclude that the current zoning is, is appropriate for the house. There's no, I, I don't see any way to get driveways to these two new lots because the land across the front of that is owned by the state. That, that line way in the front, so they can't cross that. So the only way in is through the lot. I didn't see any ingress regress or eastmans into these two new lots, so I don't know how to get there. The big problem, of course, is, is the stormwater. This is, I think, 1.05 acres, which would require a stormwater plan. I know Doug Sharp's been out there at least once, required to put up a silt fence. We've had mud in the road since they started fooling with the, the existing house that they were working on. It's still there. They put the silt fences up, we still got the mud. That spot is on a kind of a blind corner coming down. Woodland is a very narrow road, so it's on kind of a blind corner. So I've got some concerns about the traffic coming around there and what they would do and how they're going to get, how onto the road through that existing driveway. But to summarize, basically, I don't, this, this has changed hands several times. It's been here three times. It's been, well, if you don't like this plan, here's enough, let's try this. When I come to you guys, I usually come with a site plan and tell you what I'm going to do. So, but we've got stormwater problems there, we've got a lot of runoff. We've got a, a lot of traffic on there and it's a blind corner coming around. You know, obviously they could change their plan after, once rezoned is rezoned. And they could sell it in the future, owner could do whatever they want with it. So we just, as, again, in my capacity as the, the president of the association, we cannot support this petition.
All right, thank you. Who else? Let the, you can come next, but your turn. You go first, let's see. And then you hear this.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sophia Papadopoulos and I am a resident of Grovetmont on Swananoa. Some of you may or may not know me. From several years ago, we had some, some concerns right on this very same road. And actually, the previous owners of this property are one of the reasons why I got started. I had spoken to Leah and Walter, or actually just Leah, excuse me, because they were going to put in the Veterans Home entrance right across the street from our home. So we had major issues just on traffic issues on that road. And we fought the state and we won and we removed the entrance and we put it around on Lake Eden Road. The property, as I already mentioned this evening, how absolutely beautiful it is. And the UHRCs have done a tremendous job remodeling the home and making it ready to sell. It is being sold for way over the value of most homes in our area, so I'd be wishing luck in selling it. I'm not really sure what's going to happen. They put two houses in front of that. Third house, the current house up there, there's not going to be any visibility of it whatsoever. So I also, to what Mike said, how are they, how, we're even going to get driveways into these new lots is beyond me. That current house there is for sale for one, I think with one acre, but I'm not really sure because the plans keep changing, how, how are we actually going to fit to these homes? I, I don't know. We do have a major issue with stormwater. I live on the part of that slope as well. And yeah, we have tremendous runoff issues. And so the, just the flooding and the water and the runoff is, is a major concern. My biggest concern is the, kind of what Pam said, is that there, we're in a shape shifter mode. Like every time we hear about it, something is changing. I'm highly concerned that 10 units are going to pop in on 1.05 acres. That does not fit into the landscape of our neighborhood whatsoever. We have very nice lots. We are very grateful that we have nice lots. It's a very family-oriented neighborhood. There are people in the streets walking, there are people on their bikes. Where, where 10 units, seven units, five units is going to go? I, I have no idea. I don't want to see it there. I think it would completely change the landscape of what we have. And it also would influence to somebody else doing kind of the same thing, which isn't very fitting. Two houses, I think, I will say this, somebody is going to buy the prop, I mean, somebody was going to buy the property, somebody was going to try to develop it. And what I'm asking is if there's a lot of respect and consideration to the neighborhood moving forward.
Thank you very much. All right. Yes, sir. Your turn.
My name is Robert Randolph. I live at 105 Woodland Drive. It was the second house featured on the slide show earlier, just below the parking question. My wife, Jeanne, I've lived there for 22 years. I have three points to make regard to this rezoning request. The first is the issue of affordable housing. I grew up in West Asheville of the 50s and 60s. The main reason being, when my parents moved to West Asheville in 1945, straight from Oak Ridge, Tennessee, where my dad had been involved in war efforts. They were a young couple with two preschool children and needed an affordable place to live. They bought that house on Fairfax Avenue for $3,000, which of course was worth a lot more in 1945 than it is now. But I grew up in a community where affordable housing was in reach of most people. It was not a government program, it was just West Asheville. And that's the way it was. And I have a real heartfelt commitment to providing affordable housing for people here in Bunkin County. I've spoken to that in other forums. The UHRCs are proposing a place where three small houses that would be affordable for many young families would be provided and available. So I speak first of all as proponent of affordable housing. Secondly, with all due respect to some of my neighbors, I think their proposal would fit in well with our neighborhood. The meaning behind my house, there are three single-wide manufactured homes, what we used to call trailers, that fit in nicely into the neighborhood. And the house that was featured at 220 Eastwood Drive is inside of my front porch. It is a very small house, a very small footprint. Two rooms on three levels that fits incredibly well into a very small slot. The young family that lives there were able to buy it because it is a small house and it was very affordable. And it fits into our neighborhood beautifully. It's an asset, looking at it from my front porch. And as you can see, we're blessed to live in a pretty nice house. So I speak that it does, in my opinion, fit into the neighborhood. And thirdly, I want to speak on behalf of the UHRCs. I'd never met them until previous meetings here, when the original request for rezoning came up. And I met with Mrs. UHRC Laura after the meeting out in the hallway. And we had to be shushed down because my preacher voice gets a little loud sometimes. And we were reminded that we need to keep it down, that you all were still meeting. But Mrs. UHRC was very open to discuss.
Your time is up. No, thank you very much. Sorry. We do want to keep it even further. All right, yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Brian Montal. I grew up in Grovetmont. I've known everything about Grovetmont since I was a little boy. Most of the people that lived there worked in vehicles. Clarence Ogilvy, he raced a race car. Miss, people that own, Briscoe, Ken Lanner, they're right down the road from him. Frank Endor Schreitler, right up the road from him. You know, all these people that lived in Grovetmont, they worked hard for their money. These houses weren't just for rich people, even on his Grovetmont. I grew up in Grovetmont and went in the military after I graduated high school. Went to Owen. I work at Grovetstone. I'm a heavy equipment operator at Rockford. I drive part-time for Ingles. And I used to drive for Roy Edmonds Trucking Company. And I know all about what it takes to step into a situation and do a job, especially with erosion, especially with trees, especially with explosives. And, you know, I've seen these houses being built in Grovetmont the last little bit, and they're building them in places that's just weird. I mean, you're building them in a swamp, you're building them right next to a creek, you're building them... My dad and my mom just had a house, they were trying to build next to them in Grovetmont, on the water line. And they had to call, count everybody about it. And the house that they're showing next to them, I, I watched that house. I know the guy that built it comes into the quarry and gets his stone. But they're not telling that that house sits in a slope that is really just a hole where it stays wet all the time. I mean, they're just, these houses are being built in places that people that grew up around here or that lived here all their life, they wouldn't build houses in those places. And they're coming in here and they're buying these houses and they're taking them and they're basically cutting them up, selling off the properties, and walking away with a pile of cash. And the people that lived here all their life, that were part of the community, they can't even go out and buy another house for the same money because it's hyperinflated in the market. You know, I've sat and had conversations with my dad about it and they get pretty colorful sometimes. But I don't, I don't see a win in this deal. I even mowed the grass down the road by this property. And Sunday I was mowing, I mow about four times a year. And Sunday I was mowing, this lady comes by me in a car and I'm going up by the white husband's house. And all of a sudden, she doesn't get over or nothing, and I could have reached out and tussed her on her riding lawn mower. I liked it. Sell.
My name is Robert, you're our chairman, Mrs. Montal. And we want to do a closing statement about what was discussed today. In relationship to property, I've been in dialogue with North Carolina DOT to address the drainage there. We're fine with that. I've been in dialogue with Doug Sharp about the drainage. We've aligned with everything he's directed us to do. We're, we're trying to be as forthcoming as possible with this whole project. The reason we've transferred it down to just two lots in the front was to be as consistent as possible with what remain, with the rest of the neighborhood is. So we made that choice to dumb, bring it down from three lots to two in order to just make sure that the neighbors felt like it was fitting into the neighborhood that is consistent with 0.22 acres. So we're trying our best to really make it fit the, the way that they're speaking of and keep the integrity of the neighborhood.
That's great. Thank you Chairman. Thank you Board. Our rezoning request includes the one house which already exists. And if you noticed on the survey, it's in the middle of the upper portion. And we'll be keeping that land with that house, so we're not planning to build five. We want to build, like you said earlier, the two more on the bottom. That's it. They're adjacent to the R1 zoning, so it just continues what's already on that street all the way coming up to that property line. The lots are right on a paved state road with access to city water and sewer through MSD. There was some confusion that we wanted to rezon the upper part of the property, which we do not, we didn't ever. To be clear, this is only for that lower piece of the property on the corner right on the road. And we have made every effort we can to work with the community and to hear their concerns. That's why the changes have happened, is to really try to accommodate and honor what people have been asking for. And so, again, just to reiterate, this is just right in line with what's on the street. And we have the city water and the MSD available. And thank you for your time. And thanks to the events for your approval of our request.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for letting me cover that quiet comment. I, I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't live in Grovetmont, I know Grovetmont. But I do have a dog in this fight because I have a master's degree in environmental systems engineering. And this is deja vu, Bradley. We need to stop runoff. How do you stop runoff? You give people a tax incentive to bury a septic tank in their front yard and collect the runoff from the roof. And you put a pump on there to use that rainwater to flush your commode. The craziest thing in the world is treating drinking water to drinking water standard and using it to flush your crap down. That is stupid, idiotic. So give the people an incentive to do that. Another thing, if you're going to build on a slope, some of these little houses I've seen in Asheville don't have a footprint. And all you have to do is leave the ground alone. You put up stilts. Everything suggested in that's true, affordable housing. That's the reason people are building wherever they can. But what kind of people do you have on your planning board to let this come over here in a condition where they can change something? Why didn't you specify these things on your planning board? Or do you have people on the planning board that don't understand stormwater management? Don't understand, you go to the DOT to get a permit to put a road in. I'd put them in. And if the DOT's there, you can get a permit and put it in. So I question, y'all don't have enough information tonight to make a decision on this. You probably will, but I think you need to put it out. And I'll give you a list of questions. I'll be with you personally. I'll go to the site with you. And we'll give you a list of questions you need to put in the specs that go with the deed. So if they settle, guess what? The person gets it. You've already put your homework in. And you've already put it in writing. That's why I said, I don't have a dog in this fight, but I got a dog in the fight for Bunkin County. I met David Gantley, was first warning him, and I said, David, look at the mouse. We're going to be like California. Houses washing off the mouse. We're getting close to it, aren't we?
Anyone else? All right, we're going to close the public hearing at 6:19 PM. Commission, members, any questions or...
Say.
I would just, I would just want to, you know, I would just want to remind you that we are voting on a straight rezoning. So there's been discussion about specific plans. We are not reviewing a site plan here tonight. We're not reviewing a subdivision plan. There's been discussion about it and different ideas from different folks shared about that. But the question before the commission is whether to rezon this property in a straight rezoning fashion or for, for to not do that. And that's the only question we're supposed to have. All right.
Just a question and maybe we can get guidance on whether this is relevant to voting on it. Can we get clarification on what is for sale? The, the lot that has the already-built houses for sale, I understand. Does that lot include the two parcels under the...
What's for sale is the house we just finished renovating and the lot that it's on only. These two lower ones are not part of that?
These two lower ones, okay.
The two lower ones front the main road.
Are not considered.
I don't think that's accurate. You already zoned the house, too, right?
The entire parcel is...
The entire parcel being rezoned.
Which includes the house.
That's what you mean, that the house went away. Anything that is under R1 could be...
Could be.
The house and an acre is listed.
Okay, we need to just listen to...
In addition, as I said, just to be clear, the reason, the entire property is 14 acres. That is the parcel right now. I can't speak to what's on market, but what I can tell you is that the, the application that we, the, the site plan that you've seen on the screen tonight, that is... that is also an application that we received for an actual minor subdivision to create those three lots, which includes the existing house. Depending on the outcome of this hearing tonight, if the Board chooses to approve this, the applicant could then proceed with the final steps of getting approval for that minor subdivision, which would allow all three of those lots, or none, to be sold. Um, so I just want to be clear that right now, there's only one parcel and it's 14 acres.
So, so let me see, right now it's just one single parcel, 14 acres. It sounds like the property owners are marketing the house, just as the house, but with the intention that this is, rezoning is approved of, subdivided as, as submitted to the county and shown.
Yes, sir.
But we're only voting on one acre.
We're only voting on rezoning, so, so they can...
But not rezoning the whole 14 acres.
That's correct. So the rezoning area is 1.05 acres. Oh, total of 14 acres. 1.5, 1.05 acres, yes. And that aligns with what you've seen, but...
So, so the only question to that, well, probably just one question, but, you know, as far as the, as far as the mud and road and the, you know, silt fences and, uh, and Bunkham County's got pretty stiff. I mean, there's probably some people in the room that can raise their hand, include me. It's, it's, you said, fix your silt fence or, you know, every church fix their silt fence or put more up. Can somebody speak to that? I mean, you know, surely we, we have in place things that would, would help prevent that.
Sure. So Doug Sharp is our erosion control officer. He would look at anything related to the mud and road. Uh, Mike Goodson is a public engineer who's on our staff as well. He's our stormwater engineer. And the two are independent of each other, but related. So an erosion permit is separate from a stormwater permit. Um, the stormwater permit itself usually comes into play when you disturb one acre or more. Typically, what that means is when you have, uh, say, an apartment project or multiple lots that are being, uh, developed by the same developer or builder. Uh, there is the potential here, based on what the applicants choose to do, that they might sell these lots independently, um, say, to a different person. They may build their own independent home and not necessarily trigger a full-blown stormwater permit. But the trigger for a stormwater permit is one acre. The trigger for an erosion control permit is one acre. And that's related to the overall disturbance. Now, what that means though, is if we find that soil's washing out into a road, we will drive by and we will have a conversation. And usually that results in someone cleaning up the mess and taking action like putting a detergent.
Other questions or is there a motion? All right, go ahead.
You want to speak? Okay, all right. Well, I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve on the, the reason is, you know, when I look at the, the adjoining properties, it appears to me that, you know, four to five would be the maximum amount of houses to be able to put in that area. And we do have, you know, split opinions tonight, as we do, on a lot of the zoning issues. But I would, uh, I would move to approve it.
Okay. Ms. Hockley?
First, we need to address the issue of plain consistency statements. Whether this proposal is consistent with the current land use plan. And I think you're in the packet. Commissioner Melzer should have had a consistency statement in it. And that's the first thing that needs to be addressed prior to actually adopting. Stating that the proposed amendment would not be detrimental to the owner's adjacent neighbors and surrounding community as it does meet a number of goals as identified in the Bunkham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update.
Okay, so where is that in my packet?
It's on page six of...
Of...
Josh, I need to speak.
Staff analysis?
Page six.
For application.
Page six of the staff analysis document, seventeen page. It's on page sixteen, seven.
All right, somebody help me out where it's at.
Page seven of seven of the...
This is complicated, but it really isn't big, basically.
Is not consistent with what Dr....
I'm just still nowhere near it. I got, I got it right here, just... Oh, there it is.
There's sep- consistency seven statements are separate from the staff analysis, which also includes consistency statements. And they should have...
Yeah, but...
It's consistent with the land use plan, does not adversely affect the adjoining property owners.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that's consistent with the, uh, land use plan and does not have an adverse effect. Hang on a minute, where is it? Not just for the owner, adjacent neighbors, surrounding community as it does not, as it does meet a number of goals as identified in Bunkham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan Update. Therefore, the request is only reasonable in the public interest. Okay, so that's a motion.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, with a motion, is there a second to the motion?
Can this be put off? I'm not sure. I'm here in three houses, two houses, seven houses, ten houses.
So, 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 so first we have to determine if there's a second to the motion. Let's do that and then we can talk about that question. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second the motion. Now, to respond to the question, again, um, there's been different information shared about possible, you know, subdivisions of the larger, of the parcel and the smaller parcels. But, uh, to be clear, the rezoning of the property is just a straight rezoning. So there is no site plan that's for review by the county commission or before the planning board at this time. So any plans that have been shown, uh, whether you love them or you don't love them, uh, they could all be withdrawn. The property owners would have the full rights to develop the property uh, if it's rezoned, uh, as long as it's consistent with their rights under that rezoning. So there will be no guarantee that can be made to the county commission um, about what exactly will happen to the property if it's rezoned. And again, I think no one's alleging that anybody's misrepresenting any intentions. But they will have the full legal rights to use their property consistent with the rezoning. So I don't think we can get any guarantee whether it will be one additional home, two additional homes, or a different number. So, because it's a straight rezoning request.
I can't, my question is, Doug, can they put seven homes on that? I mean, um, these things?
Yes, uh, sorry. So if you take the 1.05 acres as proposed for the rezoning, convert that to square footage and then, uh, divided by eight thousand square feet, which is the minimum lot size for a single-family residential home, the math works out to five point two houses. So we round down, so five houses. Under a single-family development format, that is absolutely all you can do on this property. And that is not speculation, that's the law. I'm sorry, five, whatever else. I'm sorry, five is all you can do under the law for single-family residential. The challenge that you have, and it is a legitimate challenge, is that the theoretical could be something more if they were to go to a multi-family type structure. Um, and so that, that number jumps up. It, it, it works out to a maximum of 10 dwellments per acre in theory on one acre. So, so you have that, that 10 potential, which is, which is, the potential is obviously modified by the reality of the ground. But there's what, no way for us to know what that really is until you do a real site planning. So I'm, my analysis looks at it as a straight, one-to-one comparison of RLD to R1, single-family residential. Under that format, that's only five.
One other way we might think about it tonight is doing just the straight math. It's five lots. Five lots in Kansas may be where it's completely flat. Given our realities, let's look better in terms of the configurations. Perhaps you might need a shared garage or something like that. And the one thing to keep in mind though, is if you might have five lots, you might build a single-family home, which might have a garage apartment. You might have another unit. Remember, in all of our districts, except for Verdane, you can do two homes. Now, on a smaller lot, what does that translate to? Maybe a smaller secondary unit. The reality is, five lots could potentially be 10 homes. I think what Josh is driving at is in R1, there is the potential for a planned unit development. And that might be something small like a cottage development. But at the same time, this is not a development application. And we simply don't know. This is a rezoning, just as you put it, and that's what we're considering tonight, on 1.05 acres.
And, and, and under our county's land use policy, they would not be allowed, you know, they would not be allowed to present that kind of plan because the property's currently not zoned for it. So it's not, I don't think that it's that the property owners are, wouldn't want to show that if they do want to do it. They actually, under our process where we don't have conditional zoning, they, they could not do that. Right, so this is, this is, they're, they're going through the process that, you know, our, our system allows.
Yeah. Just to mention, as, uh, their engineer stated, if they did a planned unit development, that's an application that could be considered by the Board of Justices and natural body that would consider that development application and a public...
Okay. So I'll just, I'll just make a few comments on this. I think this is, uh, you know, some, some projects are in front of us and you know kind of right from the start, like, this is all for this. Or you see it and you say, "This is not a great idea, I'm definitely going to vote against it." I feel like this is one of these judgment calls, honestly. You know, it's not in an area that's defined as steep slopes under our ordinance. It's less than that, it's less, it's, uh, less steep than that. Um, there is water and sewer right on site, which, you know, our land use plan points towards the R1 being appropriate for that. I certainly would not have supported rezoning held property. Um, but you know, it's, it's, there's certainly some topography there. I mean, I, I think we're all concerned about, you know, um, making sure there's not... Building on slopes is not, is not easy to do right. So I think those are all legitimate concerns. Um, but I'm, I'm just coming down on the fact that I, my belief is that the outcome will be a small development that probably looks a lot like the existing neighborhood. And that's, that's my sense, and so that's why I'm supportive of the motion. There's no other comments, we're going to go to the motion.
On the consistency statement.
On the consistency statement.
Yeah.
All right. All in favor of approving the motion that the project is consistent with the county's land use plan? Signal by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, I heard four to three, or was it, how did you vote? The consistency statement. And then we'll vote on the rezoning, yes.
Turn, turn your max on up there.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. Thanks, Derek.
All right. And Mr. Presley, Mr. Frye, you were negative on the vote? Okay, you're for the consistency statement. And Mr. Frye, you were, okay, so it's unanimously in favor. Want to be clear, it's seven to zero in favor of the consistency.
Consistency, sure.
Okay. All right, now we come to the question of the actual rezoning to R1. Is there a motion to approve the rezoning of the... So, a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
That motion fails four to three. All right. Um, thank you. The noes were Edwards, White sides, Frye, and Presley. All right. Thank you everyone who came out, um, to talk about this matter. All right, the, um, next item up is the McDonald rezoning request.
So the next application is zoning public hearing, uh, 2019 dash 29. Donald, zone right on Monday. Uh, this application, uh, this public hearing was advertised in accordance with the state law and county fair, uh, the days before you were resuming the public hearing verification process to the staff. Uh, the applicant is Will Smith Donald, the family. The number of applicants are two, numerous to mention, so, uh, just going to do what's... Uh, the address is 569 and 571 Longshore Road, Martin. Subject property is 6.39 acres in size. Currently has one single-family residential home on property. And it is serviceable by public waters. The current zoning is R2 Residential, which is our medium-density residential zoning district. The proposed rezoning would take the property, and I apologize, I have a wrong label here. The proposed rezoning is for neighborhood service and not MPE, neighborhood service, uh, which is on the white hand side, shows the brown, um, that would be the boundary of the existing neighborhood service after, after approval of its agreement. Uh, the differences between these two districts, R2 is very similar to R1 and even RLD in terms of the range of allowable uses. Primarily a single-family, all for a range of single fam- I mean, multi-family type uses and a very limited range of institutional type uses such as churches, home operations, things like that. Um, neighborhood service is our lowest intensity commercial district, if you will. It's a transitional district between residential and commercial. Um, primarily a single, a multi-family residential type district, but it also does allow, allow a range of institutional uses. And some like commercial, so it allows retail, it also allows restaurants. Uh, the majority of, of uses that would be different from the current zoning would be things like, um, banks, veterinary clinics, medical offices, things like that. In terms of neighborhood consistency, um, I keep making this mistake with the MP, I apologize. Anyway, let, let me just jump straight to the table. The table basically illustrates the, the lot size differentials, um, setback differentials. And really, they're almost identical in terms of the minimum lot sizes under water and sewer. While on subject, setbacks are exactly identical, maximum dwelling heights are exactly identical. So the change that you're looking at is really one of the allowable land uses. Some views of the property from different perspectives. This is looking north across the property. And you can see that thi- this is a 2000, uh, this is a 2017 photograph. Uh, and it shows that the property is primarily a developed, with these exceptions that exist, a home. To the, to the east you have, and north you have some institutional, commercial type uses. Uh, to the west and south, it's primarily residential. Same view, different perspectives, you're looking west in this image. Look at the east in this image. Land use analysis, uh, this actually fits every single one of your land use plan, um, considerations except that it is not separated from what it's a residential. Um, staff would, would posit that this is the right kind of district for the transitioning from what it's a residential, to some sort of like, like commercial type use. Um, but it does in fact, um, not meet that one criteria. Recommendations, the planning board recommends approval is submitted by unanimous vote. Uh, and that's consistent with staff's recommendation, which is approval is submitted.
All right, this is open to public hearing at 6:41. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? During closed public hearing, 6:42. Commissioners, are there any questions or is there a motion to approve the consistency statement first? Or disagree?
I have it, but I ain't going to use this precious language here.
The proposed map amendment would not be detrimental to the owner's, adjacent neighbors, and surrounding community as it does meet a number of goals as identified in the Bunkham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Therefore, the requested zoning would be reasonable and in the public interest.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. All right. Is there a motion to support the rezoning?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed. All right. And the Higgins rezoning request. Just, all have any questions, please? Keep all the Higgins' foul presentation.
So, okay, all right, thank you. So, uh, final, uh, public hearing before you tonight for rezoning would be application number 31 Higgins slash Regal. Uh, case number is... is two thousand and nineteen dash thirty-one, was advertised in accordance with the county statutes and county code. The applicant is Rebecca Regal of Noah Life LLC. The owner is Glenn Deborah Higgins. The address is eighteen fifty-four Boulevard. Subject property is one point one, six acres in size, one commercial structure, which I believe is currently used as a restaurant on property. It's actually two properties, being considered as one application, and the existing restaurant uses both properties right now for development. And it is currently serviceable and is currently served by public waters. This map gives you potential before and after, so the current zoning is R2. The requested rezoning is E and P. It's shown over our hands side. The R2, in my previous, in the previous hearing, I explained the difference, that district content is really medium density, single-family, and modern multi-family residential development. E and P is your, essentially your most intensive commercial zoning district slash industrial zoning district. It's a, it's an area to provide concentrations of employment, an area suitable for community service, commercial services, and residential uses, along areas served by water and sewer and major transportation ports. Very different range of level land uses, although similar to the previous rezoning, the, the property size requirements and setbacks are essentially the same. The big physical difference here is that we go from a maximum building height of thirty-five feet in the current zoning to a maximum building height of ninety feet under, under the, perspectives from different directions. This is looking north, and you can see that north of this property, it's a pretty heavily developed combination of multi-family housing and manufacturing happening. To the south, this photograph is not as up to date as, as one would hope. If you see those roads to the south and east of the property, that's actually a fairly sizable apartment complex. The area injury is not called, but the ground.
Go back, please.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
In the west, again, you can see that continuation of the manufacturing, maybe it's patterned to the west. East. Land use analysis. This actually meets every single one of your criteria.
Can we go back to the map, man?
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to worry myself. Robert, hit me out here.
From Jay Gruden. A little copy of House, it's a long case.
Oh, okay, got it. Thanks.
It does meet all of your criteria, the land use plan, recommendations, plan board recommends approval by unanimous vote, as the staff.
So, why would it be, what's the difference between E and P and commercial as far as building height?
E and P is, is, is both commercial and manufacturing in terms of its intent, what it's trying to serve. So it covers a range of things from restaurants all the way through, you know, small factories and produce products. So, in, in your industrial land uses that are contemplated, some of those uses require taller structures for product manufacturing process. Also, it allows for multi-story mixed-use residential and commercial buildings. So it is your most intensive district, and it allows for any type of land use that might need to be at that height.
This whole area is blowing up.
Ninety feet? There's nothing else out that way.
Can't hear you back here, Robert?
No.
Saying there's nothing else ninety feet high out that way. A lot of commercials that
That's thirty, thirty-five feet probably bad.
Right. It, it, so the ninety feet again represents a, a potential. So if a, if a land use were to want to locate it anywhere in the county that's E and P's own, and they needed that ninety feet, they would be allowed to do that by right. I can't think of a single use in the county unless you're factoring in smokestacks and things like that that might be totally used to get to that height. Probably the only thing I could actually think of might be the Duke Energy Facility with the, the steam discharge stacks on the property.
They don't have, right? Yeah, that kind of, that ninety feet kind of bothers me. I've been wondering why that's.
Sure. So to put that in context, if you look historically at what E and P did, and that is going to be your traditional manufacturing, you might have a specialized industry. So for instance, I'm going to give you one in Tennessee, Alcoa Aluminum. And Alcoa Aluminum has a very odd, and this is in Alcoa, Tennessee, they have a very odd appearance that goes up, or the rest of the building is flat. Those are the accommodated, these large coils of aluminum that have such a tall height that they need an appearance such as that. And ninety feet is really there if an industry were to come that is available to them, but it's not necessarily meaning that they would go to that height. Another piece of information on this particular property, this actually corrects what has been a non-conforming use, meaning one that doesn't really, should not be in a residential district. They're, under a non-conforming use, that means that they're limited in their expansion abilities. So if a restaurant wanted to expand or create a new parking area or something to that effect, they would be very limited. If this was approved, this would allow them to expand the restaurant or change the parking lot, things of that nature. So what we have to do, though, is look at the surrounding zoning districts and find a district that matches. Well, the employment was pretty much all around it, so that's why we had to consider that district.
All right. Any questions for you?
No, I'd just be a whole lot more worried about a ninety-foot high building than with two or three tiny homes in a backyard. I mean, that's, that's one of the challenges you got when you're talking about, you know, zoning, you know, we paint that whole E and P brush and include it in that as, as a potential for a ninety-foot building. Another, I would do that, under front of the, you know, that main aisle.
Any, I'll get off my soapbox.
Right. But, I mean, we're talking about one point one, six acres. They, they ain't no commercial land going on that if they built any size building, because there's no parking to go with it. Yeah, but, but remember, Mr. Presley, we're not voting on what they're actually going, we don't know what they're going to be able to do. Right?
That's, that's.
That was the conversation earlier. It's the same thing. They can build a ninety-foot high building if, if we vote yes for this. That's exactly what they can do. So we got, we got to remember that when we're looking at this. We got to be consistent. Remember going from, you know, one thing to the other, so.
That's probably a good point to make, as we move forward strategic planning along with the building, and start looking at what we might want to see in a comprehensive plan as we look to how we're going to develop the town in the future.
Well, I think you, you know, and I, I hope I'm going to get off my soapbox, but, you know, as far, to me, a ninety-foot building is more of an exception, and there ought to be a way to deal with an exception instead of including in all this, you know, this E and P. To me, you know, I mean, it falls into, I guess it's conditional use. Is that it?
So probably what happened was at the time, so zoning turns ten years old in December, and at the time, probably, we looked at the county, we found an instance where there might have been a ninety-foot section of a building, a smokestack, something to that effect, and so it was just captured at that height. But we could certainly examine that if we move forward with our strategic and our comprehensive planning in terms of what we might want, how we might want to adjust some of the districts moving forward.
Did you say commercial could do a ninety-foot also, or just E and P?
Yeah, so, so again, E and P allows a broad range of uses, everything from residential group, virtually any type of commercial you could think of, all the way to some of your heaviest manufacturing. So, so an example, manufacturing would be like mining, coal mining, or, you know, rock ore, and things like that. Sometimes you have larger processing structures that might be above your thirty-five foot level. That's one example. That would actually require a conditional use for me. On the commercial range, yeah, you could in theory, if you could, you'd have to probably match this parcel up with other properties around it to get enough acreage to make it work. But in theory, you could do a, a tall mixed-use residential commercial thing. Again, in theory, I don't think you could do it on this property given the acreage, but in a combination of other lands, it is possible.
Okay. All right. This is open to public hearing at six fifty-three PM. Mr. Yonk.
Yeah, I'm ready with that. Okay. Don't get off of that, Joe, because we have discovered something here today. I, we talked about this when zoning was done countywide. How can you pass a plan and put it down on a piece of paper that works ten years down the road? There is a simple solution to everything that you all have faced tonight. And I'm going to give it to you. I've been showing you problems for twenty years, but you didn't listen until some people got arrested. So maybe I need to put a suit on, take my hat off, you might listen, but I'm not going to. I'll just tell you the truth. All you need to do is to pass a rule that you can do zoning based upon a site plan. Just like tonight, that couple could immediately said, okay, we'll agree to two other, two other lots there, and that's it. That's all we'll do. Why can't you do that here? Why not? This ninety-foot, why can't you approve this zoning so they can increase the rest if they want to without the ninety-foot? You are the governing body of Buncombe County. You have that power and that right. Are you afraid to use it? I think you are. Because if you use common sense, you may take somebody off. But we have exposed that tonight, right here in this meeting. I've heard it. You can't do a site plan until you got the zoning dimension. Now you want to get in, well, we'll do a comprehensive. So we'll get around the table and contemplate the Lintner Betty button for two years before we'll do the comprehensive plan and waste everybody's time. Think about it, Joe, don't get off that.
All right, we close the public hearing at six fifty-five. Further discussion, or is there a motion? Make a motion to approve the proposed request as consistent with the county's land use plan, not adversely affecting the joint property owners and meeting a number of our land use goals. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I make the motion to rezonate to E and P.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Josh, thanks, and Nate, thanks so much for your, for your help on all these items. Okay. We are the county chair, Ms. Dunne.
Just real quickly, just want to say thank you to the board and to the staff for the time we spent last week, twenty-ninth and thirtieth, on our plan for strategic planning. We will come back to you next meeting at eight twenty to give you a preliminary draft of what we have and to give you an update. So in a pre-meeting on the twentieth, we'll be back to you again on the next steps to strategic planning.
All right, great. Okay, the next item on our agenda is consideration of the Old Haywood Road Neighborhood Phase One Development, and Matt Cable will start us off in a second.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you this evening. I'll be brief with an introduction to the item, and then invite Andy Barnett, the Executive Director of Asheville Area Habitat for Humanity, to speak and describe in detail the project. But basically, the recommendation that is before you is to authorize a community, community development loan agreement and enter into and execute the associated promissory note, deed of trust for the Old Haywood Road Neighborhood Phase One Development. This is the second award that we've been considering for this project. The first having been a prior approved award through the Affordable Housing Services Program. The funding for this project was included in the FY twenty twenty budget. And with that, I will turn it over to Andy Barnett and have the presentation pulled up for you so that he can walk you through the details of the project, and then I'll provide some closing information to the board as well.
Good evening, Mr. Newman, Attorney General and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to present on this project tonight. I'd like to start by thanking the board for really showing some bold leadership around affordable housing, both on the creation of the Affordable Housing Subcommittee and in the budget allocation for affordable housing this year, funding much-needed housing for families across the, the income spectrum in Buncombe County, all different types of housing. So I appreciate your leadership there. We all know that can't come at a, at a more critical time. I won't do into all of the statistics because you know them as well as I do, but I'll just remind us all that tonight, one in six of our neighbors are spending half or more of their paycheck to, to keep a roof over their head. It's, it's critical for us to continue to be bold in the way we move forward in providing housing in this community. And Habitat is trying to be a part of that, trying to join you in, in moving forward boldly. For the last thirty-six years, we've been very successful at perfecting a path to homeownership for folks who might otherwise be denied that part of the American dream. We work as both the builder and the bank, and by pairing those two things up, we're able to help folks who would otherwise not be able to qualify for conventional homeowners lending to be able to be successful as homeowners. And so what we want to do in, at this, at this newest neighborhood is to really take that to a bigger scale than we have ever done before. So this is our largest and most ambitious neighborhood project to date. It's twenty acres off of Old Haywood Road, just west of the city limits of, of the city of Asheville. When this entire development is complete, it will be home to almost a hundred of our neighbors. It's a great, it's a great site. It's a beautiful setting and a very convenient setting, as you can see from the, from the map on the screen. And what we're trying to do in this site is to really expand the type of housing that Habitat is building so that more, more of the different kinds of families in Buncombe County that struggle with affordable housing can find a great fit for, for a home for themselves. So this, this site will be a, a mix of single-family, of townhomes, of some units particularly oriented for, for older adults. It's just really a great opportunity for us to, to make sure that we're providing our services across the broadest part of the county that we possibly can. We got underway on this back in the spring. We are deep into what is an extensive site development phase on this project. Again, it's a twenty-acre project. We'll be extending roads, sewer, doing quite a bit of grading to make sure that this fits in with the topography of the, of the surrounding area. And this first phase gets built out over the next few years, completed in twenty twenty-three. This is a, this first phase of, of this total project is thirty-eight, will be thirty-eight homes. It's about a seven million dollar Phase One of about a fifteen million dollar total project. And what we're asking the board to consider tonight is providing six hundred and eighty thousand dollars to, to help make sure these units remain affordable to folks below eighty percent of area median income. But I will say that Habitat's typical, typical borrower, typical homeowner is well below sixty percent of area median income. So we give ourselves some room because we want to intentionally have some, have some income integration within this neighborhood, but we are targeting, and continue to target folks who have the greatest barriers to homeownership. So we'd ask for your considerations for, for this, and I can hand this back to, to Matt, but I'll leave you with a reminder that one of the great things about affordable homeowners- but I'll leave you with a reminder that one of the great things about affordable homeownership is that you get property taxes back from this to the tune of about $60,000 a year from Phase One alone. So this will pay itself back in, in just under 12 years. But we don't do it for that reason. We do it because we know that when families are safe and stably housed, it increases the, the health and economic vitality of our community. It's better for kids at school. It's better for all of the, sort of sets the foundation for all the great things that we want for, for our neighbors in Buncombe County. So we do it for that reason, and I'll turn it back to Matt. Thank you.
All right, and a couple more slides here that I'll review with you. And they detail the existing approved loan. So as I mentioned at the beginning, this project did receive Affordable Housing Services Program funding through the FY 19 allocations process. Habitat did request more funds than were allocated, but of course, as those projects are considered, we balance out the various requests, and the amount that was awarded was 200 and, excuse me, $240,000 for that project. That included a construction loan portion, so that portion is a repayable loan, as well as down payment assistance loan. And the way that those funds work, as the Affordable Housing Committee members can attest, we've gone through this a lot to make sure that it's really clear. But those are loans, but they function more like a grant in that as long as the home remains in an affordable capacity, meaning if it's sold to another property owner, that that owner falls within that affordability threshold, it's not a repayable loan. And so it would only, those funds would only come back in the event that it was sold to someone who fell outside of the threshold, median affordability standard. And so for those first 24 units, there was an award that provided a $3,300 down payment assistance. So the request that was brought back for this project was for an additional $680,800 in funding. That would be all in the form of down payment assistance. So the first 24 units would have additional funding of $16,700 per unit available for a total of $20,000 in support for the first units, 1 through 24, with another $20,000 per unit in support for units 25 through 38. The project was taken before the Affordable Housing Committee. They made a positive recommendation to bring this before the board for consideration and approval. Your packet, as I mentioned, does include the Community Development Loan Agreement and provides a detailed scope as the attachment to that agreement. It's our standard agreement. That agreement was prepared by County Legal and has been reviewed by Habitat for Humanity as an acceptable form to them as well, should the board take action and decide to move forward on the item. I certainly would be happy to answer any questions you may have, as I'm sure Andy would as well.
All right, thanks, Matt. Commissioners, any questions? Or is there a motion to approve the FY 2020 loan request of $680,800?
So moved.
Same. Are there, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Yes, sir.
Retired preacher, what can I say? An open mic is just too much of a temptation when it's something I'm passionate about. I referred earlier to my growing up in West Asheville, tend to be, I realize this is outside the city limit, but it's awfully close. And if you pass this, there's going to be more reasons to say, well, West Asheville used to be affordable, and most of it still is, but probably outside the city limit, there's some possibilities. So that excites me, and I throw in my two cents worth for that reason.
All right, thank you. Well, so let's clarify that. It's actually, is, is all of the property outside the city limits, or is part of it inside the city limits?
This project actually falls within the former extraterritorial jurisdiction. Interestingly enough, the road to access it is city-contained.
Okay, but all of the new development will be outside the municipal limits?
Yes.
But, but it's right, it's right.
It's close, it's really close.
All right. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I'm not the kind of preacher you are, okay? But I preach about something else.
God has many voices.
Well, I see 200,000 up here on the MCCF, that was 2019, but we wrote it to 2020. And then I see 680,000 here. And I saw 2 million go to Swanton Mall. So you know what my question is, which will be addressed. What line out is the 680 coming from? And how much more is in reserve there for affordable housing? So we can monitor how many dollars we put in affordable housing. That's my question. I think they should be given, and those answers should be given publicly.
All right, yes. Anyone else? All right, great. Bring it back to the commission. We have a motion and a second to approve the loan agreement. Further discussion?
I've watched this go down for a long time. I know people that have homes that prefer affordable housing, basically in West Asheville and other areas, that charge $200,000 less for rent than people that are in the affordable housing business. It's not affordable anymore. There's, you know, I've heard this going for years and years. We can't make it affordable. Habitat's making a killing. You don't go buy a building from a person for a million dollars, and you don't have any money. They do great work. They build some homes. Now we got one deal for 2.2 million that's building apartments. As commissioners, we all want people to have a good place to live. I do. I want kids to have a good place to try to come up with. But we have to back up in my eyes and look at where we're at. This is a year after year after year coming forward. 2020, we're setting stuff for 2020. I can't help it that, you know, Mountain Housing got in here and got 2.2 million. And then we tried to figure out how that we can make it for Mountain Housing and Homebound to be able to get some money off the backside of that. Call it a loan, call it anything you want to call it. All it is is the taxpayers' money. Goes back to the same thing again. Little man's wanting to know if he can still have peanut butter and jelly sandwich together. Or we taking the jelly away from it. Much likely we are in certain ways, so. Until we can figure out, not just with the nonprofit walking through the door, how that we can make something work as it should. Because there is people in this county that rent homes, and I don't know if Don's is close or not, but they rent them for less than what people were paying down here. $200 less than the people were paying on Eagle Street. They'll be $200 less than the ones in Swanton Mall. And that's affordable. These people are business people that pay taxes on the money that they take in from their apartments, as called them. We don't call them affordable, but they're just apartments. Can they go up on the rent and call it affordable? I'm just not going to vote for any of this now until we can figure out what is affordable. Who's, how the rent stabilizes, who's charging what rent. We've got people here that make a living, a good living, with $200 less on the month, and they actually sell them furnished for water and resort. So, you know. Habitat, you do a great job. You're just a little behind Mountain Housing. Mountain Housing hasn't given me any information that I've asked for. You know, Habitat, you know, we give all kinds of money to fix people's homes up. We give it to everybody to fix people's homes up. Many homes haven't been fixed yet. I still have a car sitting up here away from the mansion. Don't have a mansion. Well, we only give them a quarter million dollars a year to do it. So till I see some answers, not one, more than that. Because we have people that make less money renting property than we do with people that don't pay taxes, don't pay property taxes on the building down there, don't pay any property taxes. I know there are wanting more money off the taxpayer. I'm sorry.
All right, thanks so much. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. This is a, this is a great project. We really appreciate everything you guys are doing. And we're glad to be a partner in this project. It does provide permanent affordable homeownership for, for working families in our community. It does pay taxes. So it's a great, it's a great project, and we're excited that you brought it to us. And we look forward to hearing about it as it moves forward. So thanks, thanks so much for all of your great work, the Habitat team. All right, next up is the FY 20 Budget Amendment Summary on the Reims Creek Greenway Project, and Jennifer Barnett will present the summary.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So this evening, we bring on one new business budget amendment item for you. On June 19th, 2018, the board approved a general fund transfer amount which included $60,000 committed for the Reims Creek Greenway Project. The $60,000 is an already budgeted county match for the Reims Quee Creek Greenway Project. We all, we have a need to budget the remainder of the cost of that project to bring it to a total of $600,000. Today, we are bringing to you a request to approve a budget amendment that establishes the remainder of the project expense dollars as well as the revenues totaling $540,000 each. Buncombe County has been awarded $480,000 from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the town of Leaverville has additionally committed $60,000 to the project. These two amounts total the remaining $540,000 needed. No additional accounting dollars are required at this time. I'd like to provide a moment for Josh O'Connor to give you a little bit of information around what would be kind of the immediate next steps for the project before we request for you to move to a vote.
So just wanted to briefly run through next steps on the project. Following your approval tonight, this will start the process of an agreement with North Carolina Department of Transportation. We'll then use the North Carolina Department of Transportation's local project management tool to coordinate with them, which will include us seeking out qualified contractors to initiate design on the project. We anticipate that we'll be able to start that within the next three to six months, so if they're going to put her in. This will allow us to engage that, that process. We will work with NCO team, put out a set of bid specifications, and then proceed. Qualified letters through their process, and then go through design. The timeline for design is at least 12 months. And at that point, we should have documents that are relatively close to construction ready so that the town of Leaverville can pursue additional funding to actually pursue construction as soon as we can make. So if there are any questions, I can answer those at this time.
All right, I'm seeing. Okay. So the action needed is the budget amendment.
Yes, and that will be to budget the, the revenues due to be received of $540,000, which would then also offset the expenditure budget at the same amount.
And the county expenses, $60,000?
Yes, sir. And it's already been budgeted?
Yes. So I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to support the budget amendment for the Reims Creek Greenway Project in Leaverville. Any members of the public wish to comment?
Yeah, can't pass up an opportunity. DOT giving money for greenways? With the streets in the shape they honor this area? I just want that registered and recorded in this public hearing. That is asinine, folks. Putting that kind of money when there's a hole in the Reims Creek Bridge that constantly has been falling through for about eight years. This little hole develops in the bridge. Goes down about two inches, two inches, two inches, they'll fill it, goes down again. You doubt me, go out there and ride across the bridge. If you ride across after they fix it, it's smooth. If you ride across and it's on the way down, it's boom. So I think DOT needs some information, and I will be talking to our local delegation.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you so much. All right, we come to our board appointments.
So I'd like to make a motion for the reappointment. Leah Ashburn on the Tourism TDA Board, I serve on that board. She's been a very good member of that board.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's take a motion to reappoint the following four individuals that help the services board.
Okay, turn your mic on.
Rick Ellenberg, Rick Mungar, and Stephen Vileka.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, on HRC, there's one vacancy. There's four folks who have applied. Yes, sir.
I mean, this room of ours, you know, here, I'd like to have, you know, we have to edge it forward like that.
Should we, would people like to interview the applicants? Or simply have some more time to review the applicants? What are, what are folks' thoughts? I know some of these folks, some of these folks I don't know, so.
I know the Instor Resource Commission has made one recommendation, but I'm, you know, I'm, that may be the best one, I'm not sure.
Any other comments on whether, would you guys like to do interviews or just vote in the next meeting? Any proposals? Anybody else want to advocate for interviews? If not, we're going to just reschedule this one for the next meeting? All right, we'll just move this one to the next meeting. All right. Okay, so we come to public comment. The time limit for individual members to, during this part of public comment is three minutes. Any others in the public who wish to comment? All right, we've got a couple of announcements. August 20th at 12:00 p.m., the commissioners will, well, they're pre, actually, we are going to change this, right? We have to do this for that this time.
We have to.
We are going to change the time for our pre-meetings, but the next one will be at the, will still be at the noon time. So that'll be August 20th at noon at, in the first floor of 200 College Street, in the conference room in downtown Asheville. The commission earlier today discussed changing the time for that meeting. In future meetings, it will be held at 3 o'clock here in the regular commission chambers. But the next meeting will still be at noon on the first floor. And then on August 20th at 5:00 p.m., the commissioners will then hold a regular meeting at 5:00 p.m. here in Room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do have a need for a closed session to discuss two items, and who can tell us about what the reasons are? Heather?
Actually, I would just read out the two.
Okay.
Yes. All of them will be under 131811. to consult with an attorney employed by or retained by a public body in order to preserve attorney-client privilege between attorney and the public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged. And two of them have case references that I need to get into the record. The first one will be RAB Builders LLC versus Buncombe County, and the case number is in support of appeals number 192-204. support appeals number nineteen two dash two oh four. The next one is RAB LLC Buncombe versus Buncombe County and Buncombe County BOA, and that's nineteen C V one eighty-two. And then lastly, we have Irene Warren Kent, Administratics of the Estate of Michelle Quantel Smalley versus Van Duncan in his official capacity, Sheriff of Buncombe County and Western Insurance Company Insurance, and that case side is eighteen C V three ten two.
All right, is there a motion to go to the closed session to discuss those items?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We will re-adjourn. We do not expect to take any further actions when we come out of closed session. We expect to simply adjourn at that time.